Good morning. I'm gonna call Thursday, October 2nd, 2025 Davidson County Commissioner Meeting to Order. Smiths Watford's turn to do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
If you will, join me. Dear Heavenly Father, strengthen us when we are weary and lift us when we fall short. Where there is fear, plant courage. Where there is division, sow unity. Teach us to lead with empathy and to serve out of love. Give us the wisdom to discern what is right and the strength to walk in purpose, mercy, and truth. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Watford.
You're welcome.
All right, recognition, Commissioner Shear, if you didn't recognize the veterans, please, in the audience.
Do we have any veterans in these hours? If you would, please stand.
The microphone there, Steve.
I'm sorry. We have a pen. If you have not already received one, would you come up and let us give you a pen? A county pen for the veterans? If you'd come up, if you hadn't already received one, okay? I'd like to thank the-
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right, register for public address if you hadn't done so. The signup sheet's right over here on the table. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Crook is unable to be at the meeting this morning and has requested that the Agenda Item 7D be removed to the November informational meeting. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing Commissioner Elliott and Commissioner McClure's not here. Can I have a motion to excuse them and-
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, all right, sorry about that, Jason. Let's go ahead and take that. All right, Tasha Lanier?
Good morning.
Good morning. I have a statement prepared that I'd like to read, please. First of all, I'm the founder of Davidson County Youth Soccer Association. We represent both classic and recreational players in Davidson County. We serve families and athletes. We understand the county's infrastructure concerns regarding the approved complex. However, I am concerned about the possibility of removing fields from the plan. The need for more field space in our county is not new. It's been recognized for over a decade. Around 2015, there was a former soccer association, NC United, that launched a campaign in building a Davidson County soccer complex. Land was purchased by parents. Volunteers began preparing these fields, but the project fell through due to lack of funding, and NC United eventually disbanded. However, DCYSA formed and stepped in where others left off, and we are sustained mostly by the boosters clubs in Davidson County. We are unique, as far as Davidson County is concerned, by having boosters clubs. When we began in 2012, we had just over 400 recreational players and only three boosters clubs were made us up. Today, we have grown to over 1,400 recreational players and 150 travel players. We're made up of 10 of the boosters clubs within Davidson County. With all of that being said, four of those boosters clubs have no field space at all. That means they cannot host games and have limited space for teams to practice. This forces heavier use on few fields that we do have, causing significant wear and making scheduling extremely difficult for us. A new complex would relieve this strain and help preserve our community fields while creating options we simply don't have today. While there are fields to rent, because I've heard that on Facebook over and over again throughout the county, this is not sustainable. We compete with other groups like the YMCA and the Hispanic Leagues for limited availability. The rental costs drive up participation fees for all of our participants, and our goal is to keep soccer local and affordable so that families don't have to travel to Greensboro and High Point and Winston-Salem. So when we say on some of the commercials, "Buy local and stay local," we mean that with our athletic sports as well. Our counties are also struggling for field space. Our other counties are also struggling with field space and looking to Davidson County. So with the right investment, this complex could meet local needs and make our county a regional youth sports hub. In 2019, DCYSA was named the number-one recreational soccer association in the state, even before launching our classic program. We took off in 2020 with the classic program, and we've grown. And it's been steady and undeniable. And our success is Davidson County's success. We respectfully urge the county to reconsider any plans to reduce-
Three minutes, ma'am.
...the number of fields in this complex. If reductions are unavoidable, we ask that Davidson County teams receive priority for rentals and that fees remain affordable for our families. Soccer fields are more than playing space. They are long-term investments in our youth and our community.
Three minutes is up, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. Chuck McConkey?
Good morning, y'all.
Good morning.
Thank you all for letting me speak for just a moment. I come from a little bit different perspective on this. I'm totally for this sports complex. I have been aware of the need. I've got a son that's 24 now and started playing sports in Davidson County when he was six. I've got another kid that's 14 now, in the ninth grade, who also plays travel ball. And we consistently, and I'm from down around the Emmons area, you know, around Denton, but we consistently have trouble finding fields to either play and practice on. And the few times in the past that we've been able to host, like soccer tournaments for other teams will come on like a Saturday for a tournament in south end of Davidson County, it's terrible. You can't find parking. People make fun of our facilities because it's like playing soccer in a cornfield. We've had to practice sometimes in school playgrounds or church playgrounds because we have no fields to practice on. Or you have a flag football team competing with two other soccer clubs, all trying to play on one football field and practice. It's not... I'm in the real estate business. I'm also past chairman of the Thomasville Chamber of Commerce. I know that the whole purpose of some of the things that we try to accomplish is to promote solid growth in Davidson County and the kind of growth that we want. If we don't have facilities to attract, you know, things like other businesses and families that want to come to this county, which, of course, children's athletics is a big part of it, making it attractive for companies to relocate here. I mean, it's... If I understand the numbers that I've seen on this facility as far as the financial impact, it will have a very positive impact. I think it will be a profit-generating facility at some point because we'll be able to host tournaments and we'll be able to be proud of this, that we don't have to play in cornfields for our kids for like football and soccer. Just sorry to ramble, but I've got, like I said, I've got a dog in this fight. I've got a kid that's still actively, he's 14, is still actively playing sports in Davidson County. And it's kind of sad, some of the places that we have to play and practice out here, but when we go to other visiting, to visit other towns and play there, they've got great facilities. You can brag about them. We don't have that. Thank you all, forgive me to amend.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you. Barry Woodward?
I've got a little passout that I'd like to give you. I'm in support of your proposal, and this was a reply to it and a subsequent post. If you didn't get to read it, from a gentleman that doesn't even live in this county, but visits it. Something to look over his opinion on what's going on. Yes, sir. My topic is on legacy. This came up in some of my listening on some podcasts earlier this week. What kind of legacy are we building here? A monolith to yourself, to be able to stand in city square and point at Beecher's Chest and say, "Look what I did." We heard in previous meetings all about what all you've done, Mr. Yates. There is no I in team. There's no I in leader. There's no I in servant. This is what your position is as county commissioners. You've been elected to be servants, leaders, and team members. It's not about you. This is about the citizens of this county, their well-being, security, prosperity, peace, and serenity, stability now and for the future. When you neglect the core needs and requirements for these things, for a nice shiny project, flashy showy thing, to show off to the rest of the world and the people that you're appointed to lead and suffer. You are a public servant as well as a leader. Get this one point clear in your head. Legacy is not about, only about what you leave for people when you die. It's also about what you leave in people. A quote from Pastor Darryl Beller, Journey Church in Uly, Florida. "Real legacy lasts forever, instilled in our children, our children's children, and their children, and on and on." Sure, sports instill sportsmanship, teamwork, friendships, and some that last a lifetime for them, but in this case, to what expense? Only the elite will get to play on these fields. This young lady just said that there's only 150 out of 1,400 kids that play travel ball. After all, it's an east coast travel ball destination, according to you. We've already have several in North Carolina. Mecklenburg County, Burlington, High Point, Greensboro, Rocky Mount. Neglecting the real needs of our school system, sheriff department, fire, EMS, and other first responders, and we keep on training them so they can go to other counties that pay better. Teachers and their support staff, bus drivers, need better pay. You already have sports fields in most school facilities. Fix them up so they can be played on. Mr. Mashburn, your county facilities are still a joke. It does not matter whether the booster clubs or other organizations say they will take care of them if you're not holding them accountable to do so. They are still the county's facilities and your responsibility. Insanity is doing the same thing over- Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. People in Davidson County deserve facilities that fit its people, not its pride. The common good should always come first. This is a statement from a passout that I gave you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mike Lyda?
When you voted to approve this project, Lee Crook showed you maps of the area and told you how the surrounding property was zoned residential and rural agricultural. He mentioned that there were homes on some of it. What he did not show you was a map indicating where those homes are located in relation to the proposed sportsplex. When the architects and engineers presented their beautiful images and videos of the planned sportsplex, none of them showed the homes that border the site. This total disregard for the residents of that area is alarming. This is a map highlighting the property with homes surrounding the sportsplex property. It is in the middle of an existing residential community. Either you didn't know about all these homes when you approved the sportsplex or you didn't care how the project would impact them. Either case is not good. If you drive around the perimeter of the property, you will see that most of these yards have signs that say, "No sportsplex" or "Scale it back." The opposition to the sportsplex in that area isn't just a few angry people. It's hundreds, many hundreds. I challenge you to drive around the property and look at the signs and consider how this project is going to impact the people. It's the least you can do. Now, if this project were a large corporation trying to build a theme park with 3,500 parking places and projected to have 6,000 visitors in a day, would you protect the homeowners in this residential community and deny that project? I think you would, or at least I hope you would. You still can. You can scale back the sportsplex and respect the property rights of the residents of the Riverwood community. Remove the travel ball aspect of the project and remove the outdoor water park. The travel ball tournaments will create massive traffic and noise. The outdoor water park will only be open a couple months out of the year, and we already have High Rock Lake to enjoy in the summertime. Scale back this $65 million project and make it a reasonable community park.
Thank you. All right, Rocky, I'm sorry, Cabanot, I'm sorry?
Good morning. Hi, good morning, everybody. Hi, my name's Rocky Kabagnot. I am your neighbor from the south, across the river from Salisbury, Rowan. I'm the president of the board of the new Piedmont Soccer Club, which is a nonprofit youth soccer club with over 240 kids. There was a saying in a movie, many of you might be familiar, called Field of Dreams. And the theme of the movie is if you build it, they will come. To be frank, we in Salisbury, Rowan are quite envious of what's going on here in Davidson County. It's quite visionary that you are going to put a sportsplex of this magnitude and this impact in this area. We don't have that in Salisbury, Rowan. And we are willing to travel across the river to come use this facility for travel ball purposes. We don't have that. And that's something that, you know, I've always been told that folks from Lexington and Davidson, they'll come to Texas Roadhouse and a lot of things this way. If this goes through, you're going to see some commerce coming your way. It's like a bilateral trade in a way. So on behalf of the Piedmont Soccer Club, the soccer fans and the kids in Salisbury, Rowan, we would love to see this happen because we don't have any of the fields that have the lights and have the things that are necessary for good travel ball. And the importance of travel ball, again, is that this is a way a lot of kids are going to get things like college scholarships because scouts do not go to high school soccer games. It is these tournaments where our children are going to have the opportunity to see higher education, maybe even the pros. So with the World Cup coming next year, President Trump is really big about this. We need to make, we need to support the administration and make soccer something really that the world can see. And I think that what you're doing with this complex is amazing. And again, kudos to this county commission for the vision to put something like this in this county I wish we had in our county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Hey, excuse me. Excuse me, keep it down. He respected you guys, so y'all respect him, okay? Works both ways. All right, Margaret Marina?
First of all, I do want to point out our centrally-located sportsplex in our county is here. This is Davidson County. We're down here. One of the requirements and one of the desires was to have it centrally-located for all the Davidson County residents. For those people that are for the sportsplex, I understand you think this will be good for your children. This is not an effort to improve the life of our kids. It is designed to be an east coast destination. We have been told that our local children may be permitted to use the facilities if no one has rented them and they get permission. The people that live in these neighborhoods surrounding this site also want the best for their children. They want them to be able to walk safely to a neighbor's house, walk to the elementary school, ride their bikes in their neighborhood, but having hundreds of thousands of cars driven by visitors down their streets will stop any such ability. I live under two miles from the site. The level of activity, the sound level, and the congestion will have a horrific impact on our neighborhoods. Property values of the dream homes people have built will be impacted. Land will be needed to be taken to widen roads. The cost to the Southmont community will be much higher than the cost to anywhere else in the county. Davidson County has many more priorities. Our schools are overcrowded. We even have to rent space for storing the food for the kids' lunches. And our buses have to undergo service with doors open in the dead of winter because the buses can't fit in our garage. Our jails are also overcrowded, and our sewer services are so bad that businesses can't expand. I've seen comments- I've seen comments that some people think this megaplex will not cost them anything. Yes, they're using repurposed funds, but not, but they will need to borrow money to fix our schools, build a jail, and improve our sewers. Our county owns other properties that would be much better suited to building something like this, so that's a possibility, but it is still irresponsible to be spending $65 million plus on basically a vanity project instead of addressing the serious needs that exist. For people coming from Greensboro, High Point, and other areas in and near the county, do you really want to be coming to this location, traveling on winding rural roads behind boat and farm traffic when other fields already exist in other towns that are much more accessible and closer to your home? We can reduce the scale and still have pickleball courts, soccer fields, walking paths, and playgrounds, but the residents of Davidson County deserve the right to have a voice in what is being built and how our money is spent. Please don't sacrifice our neighborhoods and quality of life on something that so many Davidson County residents are against.
Thank you.
No sportsplex.
All right, Randy G. Holmes. Randy G. Holmes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to excuse myself for looking like somebody that's getting ready to go work in the yard, but I am getting ready to go work in someone's yard. So, I apologize for that. Uh, I serve as the chairperson, for those that don't know or can't put a name but a face for our audience. I'm the chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I'm here basically because of, it's not really a tax or whatever, but we felt uneasy about some of the folks who've talked about our process or who have some concerns about our process. This process started as far back as 2005, 2008. Many years we've been talking about a project as such, okay? And, um, we are represented from folks all around the county. At one time, there was a concerted effort to try to have someone from each attendance zone with the schools, and we may be lacking in one area or two, but for the most part, this board is comprised of 12 to 15 members, uh, two of which the commissioners sit on, two of our commissioners, I think Commissioner Watford, uh, she sits on that committee with us and, uh, as a liaison between them and the Yadkin River Park. So, she's there whether it's Yadkin River Park related or not. So, we really appreciate their commitment to our, uh, commission and our board. Uh, just want to, just want to make a few things clear, and that is, we've, we had at length discussions when we were talking about this sports complex before we ever, I don't want to say rubber stamp because we didn't rubber stamp, but before we made a proposal or a recommendation to you guys, we had numerous conversations and talked about economic impact. In fact, I can honestly say there were some folks that said, "No, that's too big, that's too this, that's too that." But when it's, when it's presented and looked at in the manner that it was done, um, we see so many more benefits and so many more things that can positively impact all the families. Um, you know, how many times has something moved down the street or come into your community when you weren't real sure about how it was going to be and, "Oh, no, oh, woe is me, woe is me." I spoke to y'all not too long ago about a road not far from my house and how it was going to affect. And of course, I won't know until the road or until the industry is back there. But most of the time, those things with all the planning and all the vision that's put into it, most of the time, uh, it's, it's almost always better than, than we feared. And that's what, not really what we're, we're not fearful with this. We're excited about this because of the positive impact it can have on so many folks. Uh, some, bringing people from outside on weekends, allowing school people and local people to use the facilities during the week, we're really excited about that. And, um, you know, we talked about phases.
Three minutes, sir.
Okay. We talked about phases and scaling it back, but if we were to proceed and if we were to increase, uh, the initial cost of $65 million would grow to over $90 to $100 million, which would place a greater economic, um, effect, negative effect on our county, and we just feel like, uh, downsizing would actually cost us a lot more money because in the end, if we do increase, it would cost us more money.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you for your time. Y'all have a great day.
All right, Danny Kirkman.
Good morning. So, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm here to share why I believe the, the sportsplex is a project that will benefit our community and beyond. Uh, first, a sportsplex would create a positive impact for families and visitors alike. Uh, multi-sport facilities like this bring in tournaments and travel teams, which means more people visiting our shops and restaurants. Uh, communities across the country with similar complexes have seen an increase in activity and growth, and Davidson County has that same opportunity. Um, second, the community and health benefits are significant. Uh, a sportsplex provides a safe, modern place for not only kids, but adults and families to gather, play, and stay active. Um, studies in rural areas show that when residents gain access to high-quality rec facilities, participation in health activities increased, and the youth stay more engaged. Um, this complex would strengthen our community ties and provides opportunities for everyone's, not just athletes. Finally, I want to address the location concern. Some have said it's too rural or are not close enough to the interstate. Uh, if you look across the country, many successful sportsplexes are intentionally placed outside of dense urban areas. Rural locations offer space for growth and better parking with lower land cost. Uh, I myself have been to many different complexes across the southeast and Midwest as I have a 16-year-old that's been playing travel ball for years, um, and not one of them has been easily accessible from an interstate. Um, they are all in locations such as what you're looking to, uh, where you're looking to put this sportsplex. Uh, in short, the Davidson County sportsplex, ma'am.
I didn't comment while you were speaking, okay?
In short, the Davidson County sportsplex is not just a sports facility. It's a gathering place, an investment in health and families, and a symbol of progress for our community. I encourage you to support this project, not scale it back, and make it a reality for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to speak. Got me up early. I've got one cup of coffee in me, so I'm going to do my best. But I want to, I want to encourage you guys around something that I teach companies on how they grow their business. I teach companies on selling with noble purpose, and I think that absolutely applies here. And what that really means is the most successful organizations don't focus on the transactions that happen. They focus on the impact they create in people's lives. And I really want you guys and everyone in the room to think about that because that same principle applies here in Davidson County. This sports complex is not about building fields, pools, courts, all these things. It's about creating a place where families can thrive, where businesses can prosper, and where our county becomes known as a destination that people want to be part of. I can back it up with numbers in related, in relation to the transaction piece. I mean, in 2023, sports-related travel generated $52 billion in direct spending nationwide. It fueled a total economic impact of $128 billion in supporting more than 750,000 jobs. In most of these destinations in the U.S., sporting events are the number-one driver of hotel room nights, which brings steady revenue to restaurants, gas stations, small businesses. And here in North Carolina, tourism itself generated nearly $37 billion in 2024, with sports as one of the fastest-growing tourism segments. When we host these tournaments, families don't come to play, they come to stay. They eat in our restaurants, they fill our hotels, they shop in our stores, and that's money flowing into Davidson County. And a lot of those families may decide to make Davidson County their home. I've seen it happen. So, this, for me, is more about, it's, it's more about the kids who get to play on world-class fields without their parents driving two states over, two counties over, um, for those local entrepreneurs that, you know, find new opportunities as visitors spend money here instead of elsewhere. And a county brand, and I've been in marketing my entire career, a county brand that says Davidson isn't just keeping up, we're leading. So, just, just like in business, which is, you know, what I, what I teach businesses every day, when you lead with noble purpose, when you focus on improving lives, success follows. And, you know, you have the chance to create not just a complex, but a legacy.
Three minutes, ma'am.
And this can be a catalyst for healthier families, stronger communities, and a sustainable economic growth. Let's continue down this path.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I hope that got your attention. It seems like nothing else we have done has gotten your attention. My mama taught me not to act ugly in public, but even Jesus overturned the tables in the temple because of misuse of money. Now, my name is Paula Noonan. I lived on Stone Creek Drive, which is off of Lynnwood Southmont Road, halfway between the highway and the, and the proposed sportsplex. As a realtor, I sold that area for over 20 years to people who wanted to move to an area that was not a metropolis, that had rural opportunities for their children, which we do. And yes, I understand the need for Davidson County to grow. I have a prepared statement here, but what I really want to say is that we would like to be heard, that our concerns would like to be addressed. Yes, we do not oppose having a sportsplex. We oppose having a sportsplex in the middle of a community, and like has been spoken before, they can't ride there, but they won't be able to use their community as they used to, having a safe and quiet neighborhood. You've heard all this before, and if I can say what I feel personally is that we are not being heard and that we do not feel that, that you care what our concerns are. It's not just that we've stated them, it's that we've stated them over and over again. I even had a private meeting, and still, our concerns are not seeming to make any difference to you. We don't want to rule the world. We want to be heard. We want to be recognized, and we want to know that as your constituents, you care what we think. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, but I do want to give you this.
It is a, I don't know if you could, I could get it to you. Two more.
I'll take it.
We could have made copies for everybody, that would have wasted a lot of trees. So, that is one copy of the petition of people who signed against.
You can just give it to Debbie and she can, she can scan it and print it in. Uh, Lenny Deflis.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. This whole thing has changed what I wanted to talk about today. We've had a lot of people here in favor of this sports complex, but I'm also in favor of it, but I don't want it in my backyard. We have a residential community that we love. We have a lake that we love. This thing is going to destroy that. That is a cost that you guys haven't figured in on this thing. That is a tremendous cost. We all live in the community. This is way, way, way too big for our community to support it. These folks that want to build it, great, it's a great idea, it's going to bring a lot of business to the county. We don't have businesses here right now to support it anywhere, nothing. We don't have roads, nothing. We don't have the water to fill the swimming pool. Where are you going to get fresh water to keep this thing going? What about the runoff to our lake? The lake has been there for years and people have used that lake. It's going to be destroyed over this. We're in a residential community. I ask all the people that were here talking in favor of it, let's do it. Do it in a different place or downscale it. Don't destroy our community, and you're not paying any attention to that. We live here. It's our home. Recognize that, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Years, years earlier, we spent several vacations looking for the perfect place to call home, a peaceful place near a lake where it doesn't snow too much. We looked in Georgia, South Carolina, and here in North Carolina. Of all the areas of those three states we visited, we chose Southmont, a small rural community we've come to love. I've been listening to the pros and cons of the sports complex, not a community center, for many weeks now and feel it's time to explain my point of view. I believe that the complex is just too big and too expensive. I think we're spending over $65 million on a concept that may or may not be successful for us. I call that gambling. I'm not much of a gambler, and I don't gamble with other people's money. Southmont is rural and has few main roads. Hotels are quite a ways away, and there are few local restaurants, and none of them can handle the crowds for even a few travel ball teams. Parents will find very few upscale dining options nearby. Uh, not only that, Southmont's kind of boring. There's a lot to do in the area, um, while, I'm sorry, there's little to do in the area while teams are waiting for their turn to play. Southmont is, however, a great place to live. Oh, there'd be a water park also. That will be popular for a while, but it is seasonal. It will be relatively expensive for people to use, and even Davidson County residents will have to pay to play. I doubt that many residents will come more than once or twice. The location's not near highways, and it's not near much else. This is too much of a gamble for such a high price tag. There are many other projects that need funding, especially with the uncertainty of federal money. If you want to build it, don't go all in. Scale it back, build some of it, see how it does. Hedge your bets, build some, then wait to see how it's received by travel ball teams and how it's used by Davidson County sports teams. If it's popular, then fund and build the next part of the project. Give this project a chance to succeed in planned increments instead of the possibility of failing spectacularly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes, uh, all the public address. We'll move on to item 7A presentation by the ABC Board. Uh, Mr. Meredith, would you bring, uh, your team up?
Good morning, folks. I've got with me Lori Beck and Sherry Piatti, and probably most importantly, our general manager, Lily Hairston. Um, we're doing our once-a-year thing to you guys, I don't know how much of a presentation it is, but, uh, we, um, just celebrated our sixth year of being open. In 2016, the referendum passed. 2018, I think you appointed the board, and 2019, we opened the store, August 1st. So, I'm going to give you some numbers that are for five years and 11 months. Since we opened, uh, we've had gross sales of $35.5 million. Last year, we did, uh, 6.3 million, and we sort of leveled off. We kept on, the first three, four years, uh, kept on climbing, but we sort of hit that plateau.
I'm sorry, last year you done what now? I'm sorry.
6.3 million.
6.3.
Right, and I think the year before that, we were like, same thing, 6.5 million or something. Um, our net income during that, um, five years and 11 months has been $3.8 million. I mean, yeah, our net income. Last year, we did, uh, just over a half a million in income. Uh, we've distributed during these almost six years to law enforcement. We've distributed during these almost six years to law enforcement, or not to law enforcement, hiring law enforcement for what the state requires of two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. We've given you guys a million-three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand out of our profit, and for education, we've given almost three-hundred thousand dollars. We've got checks here to balance out what we owed you guys for last year in income of a, here's a check for a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, and then our quarterly contribution to you guys of fifty thousand. And Jason, I guess you...
Well, I'll take it.
We have to keep on reminding ourselves, this is not the ABC Board's money, this is the county's money. So, we have to fight selfishness quite a bit, but out of that thirty-five and a half million dollars, this doesn't include sales tax, and I guess we get two percent, Jason, or the county gets two percent of that thirty, so that's, how much is two percent of thirty-five million? Seven, seven hundred?
Yeah.
Seventy thousand, maybe?
Seven hundred.
But, anyway, we're employing four full-time employees.
How much?
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand in property tax.
Okay. That's a piece of change.
That is.
For sure. But we've got four...
And I want to clarify that, that was going to another county before.
Prior to that, exactly.
So, all this was going to another county.
As we've talked before, I don't think we've created new drinkers by having an ABC store in Davidson County, but we have changed where they're buying it at, and we're keeping that revenue now. But we got four full-time employees, including Lily and our assistant manager. We've got eleven part-time employees. If y'all haven't visited the store, no, a couple of you know have, we got a nice store, and that's because of the female influence. I probably was wrong, but I don't know if I'd have done what they did, but what they did was right in designing the store and putting fixtures in and what have you. Also, you guys' support for us when we first started with leasing the space for us and then subleasing it back was a tremendous help. It really took pressure off of us, because we were shooting in the dark as to what to expect in sales, and they exceeded our sales. I think our first budget, we anticipated a million-two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in sales, and I think we did, like, almost three, so we way undershot it. But we appreciate you guys' support. Thank you for sharing Debbie with us. She is as part of, much part of the board as any of us, and she keeps us straight and legal, so it's like she keeps you guys straight and legal. But I don't think I've ever dealt with anybody that's as efficient as what Debbie Harris is. I don't know how she manages everything like she does. But we're happy to answer any questions, ladies, Lily? Anything?
Working on a new location.
Yes.
Diligently.
Yeah, we are, we, you guys have allowed us to set aside some capital, future capital money for another location, and we have been beating the bushes looking for another location. We almost had one, then we had a snafu that had to put that off, and then we lost the location. But we were looking somewhere in the south end, and another one maybe on the northeast side of the county. But we just haven't found it yet, and we feel like location's the most important thing, especially in retail sales.
Proven where we're at now.
Yep, proven where we're at now, right there against the county line. But, anyway, the purpose is to serve the citizens of Davidson County, and we feel like that we're providing that service, and we appreciate you guys' trust in allowing us to do that.
I want to personally thank the board, y'all have done an excellent job with this, and some of these board members was instrumental in picking this board, and so, y'all have worked hard. Success don't come by itself, okay? I mean, success is, you got to work for it, and anybody that's ever been in business knows that. And thank y'all for hiring good management, because I have been to the store a couple times to look around, and, I mean, it's as clean as it can be, everything's neatly put up, y'all do a good job in the management end, so, again, thank y'all for being such hard workers for the citizens.
And anytime any of y'all got any questions about anything going on, we're an open book, so we'd invite you to contact us and let us know, but otherwise, we'll be back here next year, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Have a good day. All right, update on GIS page 7B. And I'm sorry, I was supposed to come and got an update before today. I use GIS quite a bit, so...
That is no problem. So, good morning to each of you. My name's Jason Claude Felter, I'm the GIS manager here with the county. I do want to update you on our public-facing GIS page, but before I get to that, I'd like to share just a little bit of additional information with you. Over the past eighteen months or so, there's been a time of a lot of transition and changes, updates and upgrades within the GIS office and the program as a whole. And a lot of that's driven by technology changes, and a lot of that has caused us to come back to request additional funding outside of the normal budget process, which you graciously approved, so I kind of want to give you a little bit of an update of how it's been used, where we stand, and kind of where we're going, so. The first big piece of this, and again, a lot of this can get technical and in the weeds, and some of it even over my head, and so I'm not going to try to do that, I'm going to keep it as high a level as I can, but currently, we have approximately thirty staff members across the county in multiple different departments that are users of our desktop GIS software. The program that we have used here in the county for over a decade, probably closer to fifteen years, is being retired by the software vendor, so we've had to do a migration to a new platform, and that's been a significant change for our users. Anything that you've used for a number of years, make that change, it can be difficult to take in. So, we've migrated software, we've instituted or had to do a lot of training, the technical support to support those folks as we do that. You can see the different departments represented there. And then, even after we moved to a different software, to the newer platform, we found that some of our users, we were able to move off of that into a web space, using our ArcGIS online platform, and that's kind of a cost savings for us, it gets to access data and do what they need to do, but at a lower cost, and not using the higher-tier license level. A lot of the upgrades have been done on the backend, it's the stuff that nobody sees, but it's the most important part, because if it's not right and not running, everything's going to go down, and we don't want that, and everything being internal and external. So, there's been a lot of infrastructure upgrades, we've got five new servers that are in place that are GIS-specific, we've done upgrades to our database that houses all our data, what pushes the data out to our webpage and the other applications. So, I would be remiss if I did not thank Daniel Parrish and the IT team for their support in this, and getting not only the server stood up, but optimizing them for as good performance as we can get out of them. More internal or administratively, we've done some things to try to centralize the storage and location of our GIS data. The program's been around since ninety-six, ninety-seven. Over that time, a lot of data has been created and acquired, and it gets kind of stored in different locations, and people grab it, this, that, the other, we saw a lot of duplication and that kind of thing. So, trying to make an effort to streamline and centralize data so that the users can have one source to go and access, and they know that they have the most current authoritative data. Done some automation and streamlining of the monthly update processes that we in our office have to deal with, and in a collaborative effort with the addressing coordinator, Stephanie Wilson, who's in planning, we brought back the maintenance of the 911 and our next-generation 911 data back in-house, so we work closely with Stephanie on that, to maintain all the data, this location data, that type of thing, response data for our responders. Doing so has allowed us to eliminate third-party contract as well. We developed some tools for planning department attacks specifically to improve their workflow, and then we've started kind of a GIS user group here within the county, and that's just a way for us to kind of meet regularly, disseminate information, foster communication, collaborative events, that type of thing. And then, one of the biggest pieces besides the infrastructure piece is our increase in the web presence. GIS, like most other technology, is moving more to the web space and the cloud environment, and so we have done that here as well, and are working on that. As of right now, we have about forty-five web-based applications that we are, that we've created, that we're managing, that we're monitoring, or that we're helping to assist in. To put that in perspective, eighteen months ago, there were less than ten. So, we're really moving forward, we're expanding the use of GIS across many different departments and agencies that you can see there on the screen. Those are, the numbers outside of those are the number of applications that we have currently for those different departments and agencies, and, again, more that are in discussion. So, speaking of the web space and our presence there, what you see on the screen now is what we refer, what I refer to as our web GIS. Most of the time, if I get a call that says GIS is down or GIS is broken, this is what people are referring to. This is our main public-facing application, where citizens, realtors, attorneys, whomever, go to look up information on properties and things, I'm sure you're very familiar with the, with the software, with the program. This has been around since the early 2000s. It has served the county well, but, again, primarily due to technology changes, we're in need of upgrading this platform. And so, kind of to that end, I want to kind of walk through what this looks like for us and kind of what we're doing, a little bit about why the upgrade is necessary. Again, this is built on twenty-year-old technology. In IT terms and technology terms, that's getting ancient, right? So, the backend piece of this actually is no longer supported. It went out of support in July of last year, and so we have extremely, we have a lot of limitations to the ability to make any changes to the platform. It's becoming increasingly difficult for us to maintain, just to keep it up and running, which also then, with it being, you know, no longer supported, makes a potential IT security risk that we want to close that. So, as we move forward into the newer versions of this, what this looks like, you know, again, there's a lot of technical backend stuff that I don't want to get into, but basically, a new web application should be more modern, faster, more responsive, and things like that. But the point that I really want to draw your attention to, and I know these last couple of these points, four and five there, the new application is going to be responsive and adaptive to different screen sizes. So, right now, if you want to look at the GIS application on your phone, you have to go to a separate link or a separate application, so we're kind of managing two different things. This new one is going to be responsive, so whether you're looking at it on your desktop, laptop, tablet, or phone, it's going to adapt on the fly, so there's no need for us to have a separate application. So, that's very helpful for us as we maintain these type things. The big piece of this, too, that I feel is very important to us as a county, is the cost of this. Typically, setting up new websites can be very expensive. However, we're able to do this right now at no additional cost. We have a contract that we pay annually, that's part of our GIS Managed Services contract with Avignon Incorporated, so this is the part that we're already paying. So, we would be moving to their web template as a platform, and that gives us opportunity, anytime that they do enhancements or upgrades, we would benefit from that, whether it's something that the user may see on the front end, or if it's tweaks on the backend side to make things perform a little bit better, we will get those as well. As we look at rolling out a new application, we're looking at adding additional data layers. So, the layers that you've been out there for a number of years, they're going to stay there. We are making some updates to some of the data that's there to get it, you know, back up, make sure we've got the most current information on our soil data and parts and that kind of thing. But we're adding over a dozen new data points to the application. Keep in mind that, yes, a lot of our users are in the citizens and a lot of the business community and that kind of thing, but a lot of internal staff members here within the county, this is the only GIS software or whatnot that they actually use as well, so having the additional data points out there, I think is going to be very beneficial to those folks. So, this is, I've got a few screenshots of what the new application will look like. It is not ready for public consumption yet, and I don't want to risk trying to do a live demo and bombing in front of everybody, so we're going to walk through just a few screenshots. Again, this is what the new application would look like once you launch into it. You'll notice on the left side, you're already presented with numerous different ways to search for property or ownership by owner name, parcel ID, address. We have some additional searches at the bottom, that I'll get into those in a moment, some advanced parcel search and searching qualified sales. We have a number of links across the top, take us to various locations within the county web environment. For a short period of time, we will have a link to go back to the old application or what our current application is now, and I'll talk about that more in a moment. What you don't see up here, there will be another link up here for a help document. We're currently working on developing that document, that will be placed there for users to access at any time. And then, there are a number of tools on the right side, where you can put in coordinates that'll take you to that location on the map, Google Street View, Measurements, things like that. One tool that is not shown here at the moment, because it's still being developed, is the print function, to allow users to print off a nice eight-and-a-half by eleven or eleven by seventeen page size, the map with some of the property parameters. Similar to what we have now, when you search for a parcel, you know, the map's going to, the application's going to select it, zoom to it, highlight it. Things that we're used to seeing typically on the right side of our current application, or now we'll be on the left panel, so we still have all the links to our property record card, our well-inseptic info and the like, just like we do now, and all the property pertinent information, valuation assessments will be there as well, there's a little scroll bar there. Some of the tools that we still have, or that we currently have in our application, such as identifying or selecting the adjoining owners, creating a buffer around the parcel to select the parcels within that buffer, are still there. Again, we'll have all these highlighted in a, you know, in a help document. One thing that's new by adding the layer that we have is our address point, so every structure that is addressed in the county, there is a point layer, a point created for that, and we have that, we call that our address point layer. By adding it to the application now, we'll be able to search for the physical street address, and you'll be able to identify and find a mobile home in a mobile home park, or an apartment within an apartment complex and that type of thing. Currently, we're not able to do that, we can only identify a property that has the main address, if you will, assigned to it by tax. But this will allow us to find a number of things. So, in this particular example, I just did a search by the street address of 275 Hinkle Lane, and we yield, there are like seventeen records you can see here. As you hover over these, the little blue locations will kind of flash and light up on the map, and you can click on one and give you more information. I mentioned some of the advanced search that we'll have on there as well, advanced parcel search, we hope will help us and help the tax office. We get a lot of questions, can you give me a list of parcels that meet certain criteria? This will hopefully allow users to do a lot of that themselves. It will generate a list that then they can export out, and I'll show that in a moment. Whoops, excuse me. Likewise, qualified sale search, with the revaluation coming up in next, early next year, the tax office is asking that we put our sales information out on the website, so we will have a new GIS layer of the sale, the qualified sales since 2022, and users will be able to select and do some searching on their own to look at sales around their neighborhood and that kind of thing. So, for example, this is showing an example of a qualified sale search, I use the parameters looking at sales that occurred between January 1st and June 30th this year, sale price of two-hundred thousand to three-hundred thousand. And so, the map will indicate all these little, little blue points, those are parcels that have sold, we have a list of those. Again, you see there are two-hundred and seventy that meet that criteria. You can scroll through those, you can click on those individually, the map will zoom to it, give you more information. But then also, we have the ability to export the results of any of these searches to a CSV file, which we can open up in Microsoft Excel, Google Sheets, or whatnot. So, again, someone can look at the sales, look at partial parameters, do those searches, export that out, and then they can do whatever they want to, whether any type of analysis, if they need to do mailers or whatnot, would have the ability to do that. So, the plan as of right now, we have a go-live of this scheduled for October the 15th, which is coming up quickly. We're going to be working with the manager's office to do a press release. Prior to that, the press release will have the help document go out with it as well. We already have this room reserved to do some public trainings and demos, the dates that are shown there, the 17th, 22nd, and 23rd of October. In addition to that, prior to, we are doing some trainings of staff, they're big users of this. They're big users of this for central permitting, tax, planning, environmental health, the like, to try to have their, their folks up and going on, on go-live. Again, I've mentioned that the PDF, the how-to, we're working that right now. And we plan to have both the new site and the old one running at the same time through the end of the year again. So, we're going to, anybody that's got their, this page bookmarked with a go-live date, they will be directed to the new application with the ability to go back to the old one if they need to. And then, again, we, the plan is to shut down the old one by the end of the year. So, this is going to be a big change, that we know. It's something that's been, been present in, in a lot of our lives for twenty years or more. But I think it's time, and, and the technology is pushing us to, to move forward. I feel like we're putting out a, a good product. One thing I will say about this is that by working with Avignon, using this, this is a, kind of a web template that they provide. There are a number of our neighboring counties that are also clients of Avignon. And I have spoken to some of the GIS folks in those counties, and they are in discussion and potentially planning to move to this, the, the same type template. So, what that would mean for users in the real estate community, legal community that work in a lot of the counties, they will see a similar look and feel, different data, that kind of thing. But a lot, a lot of, they'll start seeing more similarity than what they do now, where they work from different county to county in their process. So, I think that is all that I had. Yeah, so again, thank you for your time. I'll try to answer any questions. And again, appreciate y'all's, y'all's support, and the manager's office has been very supportive as well, and so we appreciate that.
Well, first, I want to say thank you, and thank you to Mr. Parrish for all this hard work and the team as well. I mean, this looks fabulous. And I'm sure I'm going to have a learning curve, but I'm looking forward to using it because there's a lot of detail there. Any questions for Mr. Claude Felt?
I've got one question. You may have touched on it. In terms of improvements to the page's responsiveness to like device type, because we kind of think like optimal UX is, I assume because it's just newer, like that would be kind of a natural component of it?
Yes, we're, we've, we've done a lot of work on the backend to try to help some of the performance. The new server cluster that, that IT has moved to has helped a lot with that. What we are actually working on right now with the imagery itself, especially the twenty-two imagery and then the twenty-eighteen imagery, is doing something called caching the imagery. And so, that makes the response much faster with, with that piece. But a lot of it's just, it's, it's sheer volume. But yes, it, we should have better performance. It should be optimized. I've, I've tested it on the phone as well. It looks sharp on there, and so far has been, been performing very well. But the true test is when we flip the switch for go-live and have everybody hitting it at one time. So, but it's sitting on the same server that our existing site is and that kind of thing, so.
Awesome, thank you.
It's always been pretty fast for me when I use it, so.
And if, if any of you would like to have a little bit more detailed look at it, certainly come down by the GIS office. We'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if folks need help with this, how are you going to facilitate that, the general public?
So, again, we've got those three sessions that will be advertised for the general public. And if we need to address that, any, if we need to add any more to that, we can. We're hopeful that the PDF documentation will help. The website does include a, a link to contact us, so folks can reach out to us directly. And that will come to myself and our analyst developer that's in our office also, so.
That'll work. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven C, approval of updated memorandum of understanding with the Winston-Salem Area Transportation Planning Organization. Good morning, Mr. Tussie.
Good morning, Chairman. Thank you, Board. I do want to give the Board a brief update this morning on a matter that's recently come to the planning department's attention. So, there are two regional groups that the county is a part of. They're called MPOs or Metropolitan Planning Organizations. The two for Davidson County consist of the Winston-Salem Area TPO, which covers the northern portion of the county. The remainder is in the Hopon Urban Area MPO. And I believe we have a map attached to the slide that may show sort of in better detail where those boundaries actually are. Perfect, thank you. But this, these are the boundaries currently in Davidson County has for the two MPOs we're a part of. Those MPOs do have an overall, what's called a TAC or Transportation Advisory Committee, which is, consists of one elected member from each jurisdiction that votes on, you know, transportation projects, funding, grants, that sort of thing. And there's a board beneath that called the TCC, Technical Coordination Committee, made up of staff from each jurisdiction, that is the staff support for those boards. At the Winston Area TPO, TCC meeting in September, we were made aware that there is a request by the, by Winston to change the MOU, update that to a new, a new version. The previous one was from two thousand fourteen, and they are basically wanting to make more or less a, an update to that. We have reviewed it, and there's not really any major changes that affects Davidson County. It's primarily just edits, reformatting, getting into a more modern format. I will point out one potential change that is, it, it's not too consequential. What may have an effect is that the, the boundaries are based on the census data, based on where the urbanized areas are. Those change every ten years with census data, as well as population changes as it happens. Some areas grow larger, some grow smaller. The boundaries for the TPO area are not changing, but our portion of the population has increased from five percent to six percent. What that means is, when the, when the board votes and they invoke the way of vote share, our portion has gone up by one percent. I'm not sure how much of a change that really makes in the grand scheme of things. We do have, you know, one percent more vote in that organization now. Beyond that, everything has more or less stayed the same. It's in agreement. Staff have reviewed it, and we feel there's no major changes beyond that one percent increase in population. At this point, the TPO is not requesting that any boards approve this document yet. They just want to have a chance for all the boards to review it and make any comments or edits to them by the mid of this month. Assuming no comments are made, they'll come back with a final version sometime either late this year or early twenty twenty-six. That's where we'll have this in front of the Board again for formal approval and adoption of that new MOU. If there's any further questions, I'm happy to go over to those. But again, this is just basically a review period for the boards, and there'll be a further adoption late this year or early next.
Any questions for Mr. Tussie?
I have a quick question. Does it change, does it have any adverse effect as far as the appropriated money coming out of that to our people?
So, it, it should, ultimately, whenever the, these funds, so this, this group is mandated by federal law, all federal funds, protections have to flow through these MPOs or in some cases, rural organizations if they're not as large enough. Most of those funds are based on a formula allocation where you get a certain portion. So, in theory, with our population going up, you may see a change to that. Ultimately, you know, this is still just an advisory board. You know, the actual, you know, funding still comes normally from the federal government through NCDOT.
So, this is first for properties are pretty much the same as they were.
Right, right, exactly.
Deborah, there's really nothing to do on this until it comes back.
I, I was under the impression that we needed to do something, but yeah, Josh just corrected that.
While doing the Board's directions, I'm happy to get this back to the TPO staff. We have no additional comments to be made. And then, as I said before, at some point later this year or early next, I'll be back with a final version that we can have the Board actually adopt at that time.
I mean, I'm like you, the one percent additional voting weight don't give us much more weight than, than the Winston-Salem MPO.
Minimal, against, and we have a lot more say in Hopon based on the population and the geography. But Winston, we're unfortunately a very small player in that larger jurisdiction.
All right, so I don't see that's going to change our life very much at all. So, there's more paperwork.
Unfortunately, so, thank you, Lord.
Thank you, uh-huh. All right, seven D, discussion of conditional recreational zoning. I don't know who's going to lead this off.
Mr. Chairman, that's the one that will move.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the one we're taking off because Mr. Crook's not here. All right, we'll move on to seven E. Proposal to amend sports complex RFQ to include an alternative concept for consideration, Mr. Mizell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If everyone will, will bear with me here. Before I, before we delve in, I'd like to share that I received an email recently from a citizen who reached out about the sportsplex. And they're allowing me to share this one piece anonymously. And just the, the one sentence that I, I told him I would, I would share is, and I quote, "I have attended prior meetings but have not spoken due to possible backlash," end quote. And I'm sure they're, they're not the only one. I appreciate the folks who spoke today, regardless of your, your opinion, regardless of your stance. Hopefully, more can, can do what you've done today, which is have a very open and civil dialogue. And I, I would encourage, regardless of where you, you fall on this issue, because it's a big one that we've been tackling, that you do so with at least respect for the other person's intentions. And so, you know, after that initial response, and I'm happy to share with the Board, if you all want to see the, the comments, they did say I could share with y'all. We went on to exchange a few other emails, and this person offered a, a very rich perspective and, and logical reasons in, in support of the current sportsplex. And though I have a very different opinion and still stand by my vote back in May to, or back in March to oppose it, I could certainly see, based on, again, the very nice, very calm dialogue, where they had arrived at their stance. And so, again, options on the sportsplex are going to span the full spectrum, right? That, that was on display here today. You've got folks who are completely against it, don't want anything. You've got folks who have spoken in favor of the current concept. And then, of course, you have everybody in, in between who, you know, thinks that maybe there could be an alternative version, maybe it needs to go somewhere else. All of that to say is, there's, there's no plan, and I'm under no illusion that there's a plan that could please everyone, at least on this, this side of heaven. That's, that's a universal truth. And the last thing I'll, I'll add there, just as kind of a preface before we get into the, the conversation, is a difference of opinion does not equate to indifference of intention. So, all of us up here have probably heard all sorts of personal jabs, attacks on each and every one of us doubting intentions. We all have different styles, and we all have very different opinions up here. But based on everything that I know, everything I've seen thus far, everyone seems to be motivated by good intentions. Again, our intentions may differ, the objectives and how we get there may differ. But again, that's kind of part of, of being in a republic and, and having a Republican's smaller form of government. So, that's what I wanted to share on, on that piece, and hopefully to just kind of help set the mood and to level set. Now, I'm going to delve into the, the task at hand. And so, currently, for this project, the, the design team is, is still progressing the current concept and getting it to a full design. I'm asking that we not take away the current plan, let that continue to progress in its full design, because eventually the final plan or plans will still have to come back to this Board. What I'm suggesting is, and wanting to hear thoughts from my fellow commissioners, is can we include an alternative concept to progress in parallel with the original one? So, again, the original one doesn't go away. We add an alternative. And so, I had a conversation, and I shared this email, I think, several weeks back with the Board, with a member from the design team who had mentioned, as I was asking, you know, hey, is this possible? Can we, can we even add an alternative plan? He noted it's actually fairly common practice. A lot of times, there will be kind of a, a low, medium, and high concepts that kind of get fleshed out. He denote that any additional concept could add an additional twenty to thirty thousand dollars and had referenced the RFQ. So, I don't know if necessarily that's the document that has to get modified or if it's the proposal or scope of work, which then we can flesh out if, if we want to move forward with an amendment. So, what you, what you have before you, and this is what I sent you all earlier this week, is sort of an outline and guidance of how an alternative could take shape. And I'll, I'll read my exact message that I put in the email to the Board, just for everyone's transparency. And so, you have the context for what we're looking at in terms of the alternative concept. So, here is my message for context. This is not a finalized proposal, but rather my thoughts on, one, the importance of offering a secondary concept, and, two, general guidance on how such an alternative might be structured. I share this in the spirit of transparency and with the hope of having a productive discussion on amending the sportsplex RFQ to include an alternative option. Think of this document as more a conversation starter to help guide our conversation, and if consensus can be reached, guidance to staff in formulating a secondary concept. So, again, it's in addition to the original. The last piece before I, we'll be quiet so we can hear from the rest of the Board, is, you know, given the concerns raised by citizens as well as other priorities in the county, again, my ask for this alternative is that we scale it back from the original. The big components are de-emphasizing the sportsplex piece to attract regional teams and competitions, and instead, keep it more of a community-focused park that can still offer a lot of the amenities and still have a positive impact on the quality of life. The main changes, as I see in, in this document, would be a reduction in the quantity of fields. So, I think based on the latest numbers I had for the itemization of the current plan, there's right now still ten multipurpose fields, eight baseball fields. So, for an alternative, can we reduce the number, not take them away completely? And then, for the aquatic center, given the, the heavy price point, do we keep the outdoor? Do we keep the indoor? Which one makes the most sense? On the sheet that I have, I called out that the indoor pool would be removed, but I can certainly see an argument to keep the indoor and remove the outdoor. And again, that's the conversation we can, can have today. So, this is not meant to be taken as a phased approach either. Like this, this plan would be the plan. So, there would be no, well, phase, phase B in a few years would be we add on this. If, if commissioners and citizens decades from now want to eventually add to it, they could. But no phased plan is embedded in at least what I'm proposing here. So, I'll go ahead and, and stop there. Hopefully, I've given kind of enough context as to where my head was at, why I'm proposing this. And I'll, I'll turn it back over to the, the Chairman for, I guess, discussion purposes.
Okay, all right. Who wants to start the discussion?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I think everybody knows I'm, I'm the newest elected commissioner on this Board. When this proposal, just for full transparency with everybody that this, this is going to affect. When I was first brought on this Board, I was probably several months into my term, still learning my way, still learning what the needs were versus desires to bring business into this community. When we first discussed this, there was disgust of phasing in, doing it in three phases, with the total price tag from what memory brings to my mind was about a hundred and twenty million dollars. And as I heard this discussion, being from a business background, naturally, I posed the question, was anybody put the pencil to it to do it in one phase? So, after that, it knocked the price tag from a hundred and twenty million down to the sixty-five, which we see now, which made much more sense. Well, in the interim, that day, in that meeting, a bunch of people spoke out, the citizens, the majority of the citizens spoke in favor of it. Well, over the course of the next several weeks prior to the next meeting, I got inundated with folks that were either not wanting something the size and scope of that or not wanting it at all. It concerned me enough to contact the Chairman. He and I discussed it the day of the vote. I said, hey, this is what I'm getting. I think it behoove us to put this thing off, to publicize it a little more, to put it out, the vote out a hundred and twenty days, to give the citizens of the county more time to find out about it, discuss it. And he respected my concerns and said, if I've got support on the Board to bring it to a vote tonight, I'm going to do it. And I said, that's fine, that's your prerogative. I said, but with my concerns, the way they are, if that's the case, I can't in good conscience vote on it tonight. So, as you know from the vote, I voted against it. Well, in the intervening months, learning more about the needs of the community, the county, the jail, pay for first responders, schools, a lot of the more pressing needs made me. made me realize, hey, I'm glad I voted against this. In theory, am I in favor of some type of sportsplex to bring revenue into this county? Yes, but not at the expense of shortchanging needs we have for other things. So, I'm in favor of what Commissioner Mazel's trying to do, to scale it back, to use that extra money to put towards other needs, to not impact the folks of this area, their living there. And I'll be honest with you, if it was in my backyard, I wouldn't want it there. So, in its current form, I can assure you, I cannot and will not support it in its current form, and I welcome the opportunity to discuss with my fellow commissioners this proposal that's put forth this morning. So, I just want to say that in full transparency, because there's been all kinds of stuff on social media, as we all well know, mischaracterizing where I stand, what I did. You know, the reason we're getting it is because I made the suggestion to price it out in one fell swoop, but that was a mischaracterization of the full discussion, which is why I'm sharing with you all what I did this morning. So, that's basically where I'm at on it.
Okay. Who wants to go from here? That's fine.
Thank you. I appreciate this. As you know, I've been on the Parks and Recreation Board for a long time as a liaison between the Yakin River Park, which, if you haven't been there, is one of the many parks that has been started and is now flourishing, and is a wonderful park over on the Roan County side of the county. Very proud of what that particular group, which I was a part of, has, and under the current director, who has written numerous, what do they call, grant situations, and I've been so proud of what he's been able to do in that particular park. When we talked about this, I was hesitant at the very beginning. I was hesitant about the water park portion, and I voiced that, and I talked to the director, and I talked to some of the other commissioners, and I thought, well, if we do plan to have travel ball come here, then I just think this is an additional amenity for the citizens of North Carolina and our county. I want you to know, those of you that think that we're not listening, to please understand, not listening and making a decision that's different from your opinion does not mean that we are against you and not listening to you, because we are. I just happen to think, and I do not have any children that will enjoy this park, my grandchildren are a little bit older, so, and they're not athletes, and so they're in the band, and so they will not be using it. But I do have nieces and nephews that can use this park, and I have, I have received a lot of positives. We need this park, we want this park, we'd love to have this park. So, I just like to say that. And I'd like to say about what I like about the park and your proposals, some of the specific things here, I think reducing the ball fields and so forth, those fields will not give us the opportunity to have this travel ball, I don't think, because I think we need this many. Secondly, the pool situation is one of the most exciting part of the park that I like. First of all, I'd love to see all the high schools in the county be able to have swim teams, and with that indoor pool, those swim teams would be able to flourish. The northern end of the county, several years ago, there was a move toward trying to get a large facility built in that area. It's just not ever transpired. When I was teaching up there, there was a lot of talk about that. So, I, you know, I really would like to see that indoor pool. And the outdoor pool, the reason it's so exciting for me is talk about something for the entire county citizens, especially people that do not have access to pools in their home or, you know, in their community. That would be a wonderful facility for them to use. Indoor facilities, you know, I love the fact that women's sports is excelling, and the idea of having volleyball courts in there, as well as the pickleball courts helping adults would just be wonderful, because there's a big, big push in that area, and that, again, is a good health reason. So, you know, I think this facility, you know, it may not be, and I wanted to address the one lady, you know, that with her map was talking about the upper end of the county, but from where it is, there's a long way down to Denton, so there's a lot more of the county that could use, you know, that would be closer to this facility. So, you know, I know a lot of you do not want it, but I think in the long run, in the future, I will not be here, I will not be alive for a lot of the kids specifically to use this facility, but I just, you know, we haven't done travel ball, I don't know anything about travel ball, except for what people tell me about it. And the ones that do it would love to have this facility in our area. So, those are my feelings about this facility.
Michelle.
I'm going to try to be brief here. Everybody's for prosperity, but don't put it in my backyard. I mean, we've run into that with creation of jobs. When I first stuck over, the biggest thing I heard from my citizens, we need jobs. We've created thousands of jobs, but I hadn't heard anything from the citizens about the number of jobs we've created. But most of those places, the people around those areas didn't want those big plants there. But now, you hear nothing from them, and they don't have a negative impact on them. I'm sorry, but this is the way I feel, Matt. If you take Lowe's Home Improvement, for example, and you remove their paint department, you remove their plumbing department, what's that do with their ability to generate resources? If we're not going to do this right, we owe it to you, the citizens, to do it right, if we're going to do it. That's a big investment. If we're not going to do it right, we don't need to do it. They don't need a community park down there. They've already got that. They've already got that, and we hear a lot, well, it's not kept up, that's because you've got people, just the people that abuse your animals, that litter our highways and tear up our parks. They've got to take your hard-earned money and go back and try to fix those things. But who gets the blame for it? We try to keep them up. We've got the best park director in the state. Other parks call him to go and give them advice. If we're not going to do it, if we're not going to do it right, I'll say, don't do it, period. Because we owe it to the citizens, if we're going to do something, to do it right. And it's very easy, and I'm just as guilty as anybody else is, that when you believe in something, to close your mind to every other, every other listening that somebody else may have to say. I don't want to hear that, I don't believe that. Sometimes it pays us to sit back and think rationally. Well, let me hear, let me think about that a few minutes, you know? They may have a point. And just, I think, as Matt said a while ago, just because we don't agree on something don't mean we're enemies, and we don't have to talk to each other like we're enemies. We're taxpaying citizens too, just like you are. And I want what's best for this county, just like you do. We may disagree on something, but it don't mean we're bad guys, or you're bad guys, because you don't agree like I, you don't believe like I believe. But that's just the way I feel. If we're not going to do it right, then I just say we don't do it.
May I say one more thing? I have been all over the property with our director in a gator one day, and it is a beautiful piece of property, really, really beautiful. And it was easy for me to see it a little bit better, because he said, you know, he points to this area, which is very flat, and then behind it, all these trees that go up to heaven, you know, just as far, very, very tall trees, very, very nice, and with a hundred acres in the middle and two hundred acres around it, those trees around are going to be an excellent buffer. I can see that, once you get there and ride the property. I think that's a big concern of everybody, and I know Thomas and how he's done the other parks, and I want to say, when he came to here, one of his first goals was to make all the parks ADA accessible, and he's done that. We have splash pads. I mean, a lot of the parks, they may not be the prettiest in the world, but they have been worked on in his tenure, and we've seen a lot of better parks than where they were when he came here. So, riding the property, you know, I can point over here and say, there's just going to be one field right here, you know, it's going to be by itself, you know? And, you know, I could visualize how beautiful it was going to be, the outlying space with this nice park inside. So, I think that's covered everything that I wanted to make sure I said.
Did you have something, Matt?
No. No, I mean, I appreciate you all taking the time to study it this week. I was wondering if I wanted to get it to you earlier.
Casey, I'm going to need some clarification here, because I'm trying to remember Mr. Kester's, what he said a while ago. Did our first vote for this park, was it not a six to one vote? Debbie, can you?
I'd have to give...
I thought it was a six to one vote, everybody was in favor except for Mr. McClure. And the second vote was the four-three, because that was for the RFQ?
We'll have to check. I mean, technically, the first vote probably would have been the day we decided to buy the property.
Buy the property.
I mean, at that point, you've committed to the project, but we came in in our retreat in March, as I recall, and Debbie can confirm this technically later, or now, however you want to do that, we talked about it in concept. And so, I believe, recalling that conversation, there was a question about a scaled-back option at that point. And, yeah, kind of a phasing in, and I believe even a dollar amount of thirty, thirty-five, if somebody said that, and it was kind of, no, probably need to do this at this full amount now. I don't know about the one-twenty piece, but nobody, we never was going to that anyway, not anytime soon. So, the sixty-five was kind of thrown out as that's where we want to head toward, and I think pretty much, yeah, I believe everybody but Mr. McClure at that point was ready to go to that place. Now, after that, as Mr. Kester said, there was things that changed. That's when we bought Bryan Ford, started doing the design plan, and it's been moving along all those times up into this point. To the point of now where we're ready for the grading piece, which would stay, actually, this month.
And that brings back a little bit of memory, because I think it was six-one, because, again, I remember you, Matt, saying, we need to do the same, we need to do all of it, it's a bold move, but we need to do it. Because, again, I think that's where I was at, is going, you know, do we really want to take, eat all the apple at one time, or take a couple of different bites? And you all pretty much persuaded me, because the committee, you all were speaking on behalf of the committee that you serve on as well, I take it, that the committee says this needs to be done all at one time, and so, again, we have a committee in place for a reason. They do, hopefully, you all done your research back then, and come to us with a recommendation. So, that's kind of how I remembered it was a six-one vote, and then when we come to an RFQ, that's when it turned over to maybe a four-three, or whatever it was. And that's when we had some citizens saying, we want more information, and that kind of thing. And which, you know, during the process, there will be tons of information, and I think we'll try to get some of them up here this morning and give us some information of where we at today. But this followed the same procedures, and I want to go back to, you know, of course, I have family that tells me what they read on the internet, that I'm making millions off of this, and I think you all know that's absurd, right?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, it's good for fellow board members to speak up and go, you know, and I don't think anybody else on here is making any money off of it. If they are, I'll be the first to report them to the SBI, because that's just not the way I think people in government should work. I don't think anybody should be getting their pockets greased. And again, you know, it's terrible that our citizens believe that, and I get the reason why, because probably happens in Washington, it may happen in Raleigh, but I have not seen it happen here since I've been on here for fifteen...
Seen any evidence of that.
Fifteen years, you know? So, my decision, just like y'all's, is based on what I think's good for the community, you know? And it always has been. I've put a lot of hours into this county commissioner job. Tug it away from my family, just as you all have, tug it away from my business, just as you all have, so, anyhow, some of those things is hard to read, because they're not true, and it hurts families, you know? It hurts my family when they read it, and, you know, some, anyhow, I'll get away from that. This is not my legacy, okay? Nothing about this, my legacy. You know, if this thing goes away, it goes away. That's okay, you know? It's the children's legacy is what this is going to be for the youth. That's my belief, I really do. If we can keep them out of the jail, if we can keep from building a ninety-five million dollar jail, or a hundred million dollar jail, if this helps, I don't know if it will or not. You know, what we've been doing in the past is not working. Look at the things that just happened in this country in the last two weeks, shooting up a church in whatever state that was, and shooting up people right here in their own state, just out having dinner. So, you know, what we're doing now is not necessarily working. But with all that said, I want to go back around to infrastructure, because, again, Mr. Shale, Mr. McClure, Mr. Elliott, these folks here, and the past board members that served with me, we have not shortchanged our schools. Casey, I think you just had some numbers the other day, where we went up and above spending what we required to do on our schools, is that...
That's in the last ten years, right?
In the last ten years, we went...
Go back even further, it's probably more, because we built schools during those times.
Yeah. And I don't have the number, I had these the other day, but how many new schools have we built? I know we, Briar Creek, um...
In the last twenty years, I'd have to get you a count. In the last eleven I've been here, Oak Grove, and Oak Grove Middle was shortly before that, it had just gone.
There's Oak Grove Middle, Briar Creek, Charles England...
Freeburg.
Freeburg, Friendship?
Friendship.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't think the commissioners here are the ones before have shortchanged this county at all. I think we've done an exceptional job of trying to keep our infrastructure up to date with the low tax rate that we have. I mean, we have a pretty low tax rate compared to other places, and we seem to get a lot done with that. So, not only the infrastructure with schools, the infrastructure, we built a new courthouse, we built a new sheriff's office, we built a couple new EMS bases, and not including the money that we've spent on sewer infrastructure, which if I can, my memory serves me right, Casey, probably, in a little short distance before I come on here, but then throughout my term, we've probably spent, or spending somewhere around sixty, seventy, eighty million dollars on sewer infrastructure?
I don't know. I'd have to pull that...
Maybe more than that, taking into account what we've done to attach all of it.
Maybe in the last twenty years.
All the schools was about thirty to forty million, the best I remember.
Last one is DT.
Right. And then another, we spending about forty now, if maybe fifty, close to fifty.
I think it's more than fifty, yeah.
So, you know, close to ninety million dollars. So, I want people to take all this, it's easy to sit back and armchair quarterback when you ain't in the game, you know? But when you in the game and you see what all we've done, could we do better? I guess there's always room for improvement for everybody, okay? I ain't saying we make the best decisions.
Not only that, Mr. Chairman, but our employees have received a higher raise than the history of Davidson County. That includes law enforcement.
EMS.
And all of that without raising taxes.
Now, just so people know, teachers, we don't pay the teachers, the state pays the teachers, okay? We have a supplement, we just increased that supplement this year. You know, we'll try to work there, what I would really like to see, and it's on the state level, is more teachers per pupil. Me and the superintendent election in high school the other day had the conversation, because I... Me and, me and the superintendent of Lexington High School, the other day, had the conversation, cause I compared her, um, or not her, but the districts, I guess, uh, numbers compared to an, another community up north. And, and the difference I found was, um, the place up north had one teacher per eleven students, to where in Lexington, we have one per eighteen. So, if we really wanna fix education, how do we fix it? Do we give them more teachers? Seems to be working on the example that I gave. Uh, but again, that's not for us to do here, that's for the state to decide then. But if we really wanna talk about education, and again, I think they need a dry place to, to learn. I think they need a warm place to learn in the winter, and I think the conditions need to be decent in the summer. Um, but again, I don't think brick and mortar, uh, gives them education. I think it's the teachers and how they instruct them that gives them the education. So, if we wanna keep fooling ourselves by going, let's build a hundred million dollar school, they gonna get a better education. That ain't gonna work. So, again, I'll go back to some stuff that some family members has told me about, they seen on Facebook, leaky roofs. I'm sure out of probably fifty schools in the county, um, again, how many schools do we have in the county? I should know, but seems like thirty to fifty, somewhere between thirty and fifty. Now, a- out of all those schools, out of all those buildings, you gonna have a, a roof that leaks from time to time. Okay? So, now, do I think our school board's handling those? I do. I think if the, the teacher, the principal of that school lets the school board know, they got a maintenance crew that goes out, and, and we fund maintenance to the schools. So, I, I don't really see that as, I've had nobody out of my fifteen years come to me and say, we've had the same spot leaking in our school for fifteen years. I've never, never seen, never heard that, okay? So, but again, they would have to carry that concern to the Davidson County School Board. The school board would look at it, um, hopefully, wouldn't have to go to the school board. Hopefully, they could tell, uh, their supervisor, and they'd get somebody in maintenance to come fix it. So, but again, with all that said, I, I kinda hate to hear shortchange, because there's a lot of people worked on this board very hard before my time, way before my time, that, that hasn't shortchanged, you know?
Let me clarify. I think you're misunderstanding my statement. When I said shortchange, I'm looking more recent. I'm not miscategorizing anything this board has done before I came. I think it's been handled great.
Thank you, thank you.
Since I've been here, though, when we basically were discussing the raise for our first responders being, and I'm not looking to ingratiate or benefit myself financially, I even told y'all when we did that, I would forego any raise.
Right.
What I'm talking about is that when I've worked in that, that field for almost fifteen years, and I have since been here and continually seen us lose good talent, we bring them in and train them, only to lose them to somebody that's paying better. And I know we've discussed, you can't chase this and can't chase that. But it about felt like an arm wrestling match to get the two percent we did get, just to try to maintain some of the people we've got. And the same thing on the jail, I mean, guys, let's look at it, this thing that happened in Charlotte recently, this guy that had been charged thirteen times and got let out, and he killed that girl on the mass transit. I mean, we've had to lessen the degree of people we put in our jail to prevent the overcrowding in what we've got, because the state comes down on us, we have to pay to house our people in other places, which is, is an exorbitant amount. We have to, I've seen judges try to work with us and not put people in jail to keep our levels to where they're at, so they don't get back up to where they were when I first came here in two thousand and eighteen. We were a hundred and twenty-five people over capacity. We had, instead of eight people on the squad, we had four, and I came from Forsyth, which we, we didn't deal with that. I mean, it was well-staffed. But since then, it's exponentially gotten better. The jail has been cleaned up, we've gotten the staff numbers up. But then, you know, I, I look at it as, yes, at an expense nobody wants to incur, yes, it is. But by the same token, so, to provide the service for the people of this county, to provide a facility to house these people, so they're not outrunning, losing the county, recommitting the same crimes. I'm just saying that if we do do something, just, just like Commissioner Shale said, if we do the sports complex, he's saying do it right. Well, I'm saying if we do the jail, do it right to where we can accommodate these people that have heretofore maybe been unnecessarily put back out into the community as to not overcrowd what we've got. I wasn't miscategorizing the job I've already done. I'm just saying that if we put all of this money in the sports complex, but then we come back and say, we don't have the money to do an adequate jail, then I've gotta look my constituents in the face, and they say, well, you know, you're, you're, you're a law enforcement officer, don't, why are we letting these people back out? That's the balancing act we got to do.
And that's a fair statement, I wanna, I'll follow up with that, okay? Because when I gotta go, let's go back to the raises for law enforcement.
Right.
I'm pro law enforcement.
I know you are.
People will pick on me all the time, or whatever, but that's, that's bull, okay? I'm pro law enforcement. Again, Casey brought us numbers that showed that we're, we wasn't off with Rowan County, our biggest competitor. You had to figure in all the, e- everything that we paying.
Right.
But that's what you should be doing. Instead of just saying, we're not paying our people as good as we should, is not good enough, you know? I'm a business guy, you got business background. What you do is look at the numbers. Anybody can say anything, just like the folks are saying, whatever they saying, all over social media. They can say anything. But the facts, the proof's in the pudding, you know? What's, what's the check made out for, and what's the check made out for over here? And y'all seen the same numbers I did. Actually, our numbers were not very far off of Rowan County's, and they supposed to be one of the top payers, okay? So, I don't buy that, then, that we're losing people because of the pay. Maybe that, maybe there's another reason.
With what we recently did, though, that helped stem to bring it more to where, you know, I get the feedback working in that field. The feeling was, well, you know, they don't care about us, we do this, we do that. And it did solve a lot of the issues. I'm not hearing that, I'm hearing a lot of appreciation for what this board recently did to mitigate that.
But what I'd really like for them to know is the real truth. You know, the real truth is, let's look at real numbers and see, you know? And again, some of the numbers may have been compared to places two hundred miles away from here, or a hundred and fifty miles. You can't compare salaries with a, I can't compare what my people make compared to what they make in New York City. You know, because it's union, it's a whole different thing, it's a whole different cost of living. So, I wanna compare it to what happens somewhere around me. I know what the folks are paying in Charlotte, that's in my industry, or the folks that's paying in Greensboro, and that's, you know, I gotta pay somewhere, I don't have to pay quite as much as Charlotte does, cause the cost of living's here.
Right, that's understandable. If it's, if it's within reason, I don't think they expect it to be the same as a bigger municipality that's got a higher tax base.
And I wanna tell you, I want our county employees and I want our citizens to make as good a money as they can. Anybody that believes any different than that, I wouldn't have worked as hard as I've worked for the last fifteen years to bring my business mine, whether it's any good or not, I don't know if it is or not. But, you know, if it's decent, I wanna bring that philosophy to this board. I want our employees to have as good a job and as good a benefits as we can afford to give them. Uh, but again, without killing the taxpayer with absurd, with absurd property taxes. You know, property taxes, I, I can tell you, I pay a fair amount of property tax. If it got a whole lot, whole lot higher, I'd just quit. Because again, it's not worth it for me to get up every day and go to work and work hard to pay nothing but federal income tax, state income tax, and property tax.
Oh, I'm with you.
If I gotta do that, then I might as well just hang it up. And those people that work for me, they, they can go to one of these other good companies that we're bringing in here and make good money. Some of these companies, uh, you know, when you got eight or ten thousand employees, maybe you can afford higher property taxes. Um, but anyhow, that's just one instance. For the jail, I wanna cover that, because I've been doing, I'm on the jail committee. And, and you know, we have a jail committee that we, I don't know if we'll meet today or not, but we meet once a month on Thursday. Um, uh, and we talk about this jail, what it should be, the size of it, you know, the sheriff's input, our input, the city of Lexington's input, cause it's going over here, there's several members on this, on this committee, just like the Parks and Recs Committee. So, you know, when we talk about these things and we come with some sort of decision, I know it ain't gonna please everybody.
Right.
But we've-
Never will.
It never will, just like you said while ago, on this side of heaven, it'll never please everybody, okay? So, what you try to do is come up with a plan that works somewhat for everybody.
Right.
Now, again, you still gonna have this one over here going, I want this, or I don't want this, or, um, so that's kinda how that, that plays out. You know, one of the, one of the commissioners asked me the other day, so, well, we gonna lose a hundred beds when we build this new one. We won't lose a hundred, we gonna trade a hundred, cause a hundred goes away with the old jail.
Right.
And a hundred, but we gonna gain a net eighty-eight beds. But he thought we was gonna lose a hundred, you know? So, I get it, it's hard for the commissioners to keep up that's not on this committee. And again, within budget, okay? But I looked, um, four hundred and fifty, I, I just happened the other day, I like comparing things. So, I compared our Lexington school here with a Lexington school somewhere else, just to see. Same amount of population, that's where I found the teacher ratio and, and, um, and all the statistics that I found. But I just thought, okay, well, how big a jail has Myrtle Beach got, you know? Let me look it up. So, Myrtle Beach, four hundred and fifty, I think four seventy-five to five hundred, that's what they say, Myrtle Beach, Horry County. Four hundred and sixty-five thousand people in that county. We gonna have three hundred and eighty-eight beds. You know, now, the hundred million dollar plan goes to four fifty, but do we need four hundred and fifty beds compared? Myrtle Beach has only got four seventy-five, or Horry County. So, those things play into my mind, as a business guy, statistics-
As they should.
As they should, you know? And I looked the other day, they had four hundred and, uh, they didn't have that, four hundred and seventy-some arrests. Uh, we had for the, for the last month, we had two hundred and sixty-four. Now, this is going off of what I can find online on public database, you know? So, we was a hundred and fifty or two hundred less in monthly arrests than they had, you know? So, again, I get it. Um, I don't know what we gonna do with mental illness. Mental ill- illness is a, is a big problem, okay? Now, again, as commissioners, I'm on the DSS board too, so whoever, you know, uh, wants to serve on the DSS board, we'll see if we can find you a seat, if you'd like to set up there, because it's, uh, definitely not a, not a very, um, what's a, what's a good word for that? It's not a very fun board, okay? It's, it's not fun to be on. Parks and Recs sounds like that'd be kinda fun, you know, but DSS is not fun. You, you hear the mental illness issues, you hear the children, uh, that's in help, the, the fostering homes that's, uh, got these kids, the other homes that they have to send these kids to, it's just terrible. Our, our director's right back there, Ms. Baker. I don't know how you do it, it's an, it's a terrible, terrible, um, situation that some of these children are in, that you gotta deal with on a daily basis, so. Thank goodness we got somebody like her, uh, and other people that do that kinda work. But mental illness, I, you know, that's what's being let out of jail, because we don't, we'll never have enough room for all the mental illness. Uh, you don't know if this person's gonna, you don't think they gonna go out here and kill somebody this afternoon, they got mental issues, but, you know? So does many thousands more that come through there. So, if you held everyone that may go attack somebody like that, we c- we can't build enough jails, I don't think, to hold them all. So, again, how do we fix that? I don't know. Again, I'm gonna go back to the sports complex, cause maybe, I think that may help some. Maybe these kids'll have a, they can go play ball, and they can go swim, and they can go do some fun things. Maybe that would keep them from, from going down a path of, of the bad road. But again, this is all just my, my thinking. Y'all have different thinking, that's mine. Uh, if, if we can save a hundred kids that way and keep a hundred out of jail, that saves thirty million bucks, uh, that we need for another hundred beds down there. So, anyhow, with all that said, I'm gonna go back to what Commissioner Shale says, and says, you know, if you can't, my, my plan originally was do the whole concept, just take it in two bites of the apple or something. Um, but it was never not to do, cause I think the whole concept needed to make it profitable. Make it to where it would sustain itself. Again, I'm looking at something that I think will sustain itself. Do I have a crystal ball? Every business move I ever made, I don't have a crystal ball. I just, I, I, I try it, and I build it, and I work hard to try to make it work, no different than we would do with this. Just build it and work hard and try to make it work and make it successful, to where it's not a burden on the taxpayer. So, did you have something, Commissioner Shale?
I did, so I also emphasize, you know, everybody, things change, regardless of like that jail facility. When we started that, we didn't have that SunTrust property. So, to me, that changed the whole concept as to how do we move forward from there. Not, not saying I have an absolute idea how to do that, but I'm just saying that is an option now we didn't have before.
Yeah.
And that's a good point. See, without serving on the jail committee, some people wouldn't know that. When w- we couldn't buy the SunTrust building for a long time, we tried and couldn't, so we were stuck there. Now the opportunity's there. Um, let's say in ten years, we do need another hundred beds. It's easy, we can tear down, we can tear down the SunTrust and go up there, you know? And you say, well, why wait ten years? Well, right now, we don't need the four hundred and fifty beds. We gonna gain an additional eighty-eight beds.
Right.
Now, again, we could build three thousand beds if we wanna try to take care of all the mental, uh, cases that we have come in, and, and that still wouldn't be enough, and the state would have to build millions, you know? So, again, I don't know, I wish I had a answer for that.
And I'm not saying, like I say, just like the concept we're talking about with this, I'm not saying we need the hundred million. But what I am saying is, we may need some intermediary solution, not that, but with the proposal to be able to add later, as we assimilate some of that debt and it doesn't ever burden the taxpayers.
And we have that, you know? I mean, again, I think we've worked really hard to try to accomplish all that, not put all of our eggs, you know, to where we can share a little bit of money. This would not be possible, um, you know, if we hadn't been good stewards of our money. We've been good stewards of our money for, for a long time. Before I come here, I think they was good stewards of our money, not wasteful spenders. And we're gonna be in good financial shape, you just seen the other day. I mean, the debt's coming off, uh, in just a few years, the debt'll come off. And we're looking, we've changed EDC around quite a bit, and, um, we've got a couple projects that may come through, um, like you said, they may come through, but we're, we're negotiating back and forth and different details or whatever. If they come through, they will be game changers for the, the tax income, okay? Not a lot of, not a lot of, uh, uh, taxation on the infrastructure, uh, but they will be really high-paying property taxers. And which that will change the face. That'll be after I'm gone, but whoever comes in after me will go, wow. You know, now we got money, just, so, almost like a money tree.
Well, like, like I, like I made the point, not only to my fellow board members, but to the citizens, I'm not casting expersions on anybody, or that there was mismanagement, or there wasn't wise financial stewardship. That was not my point.
And I don't think it was.
Not, not at all. I think it's been done, I've lived in this county almost thirty years, I appreciated the low tax rate. That's the first thing that attracted me to move from High Point to Davidson County thirty years ago. And I appreciate that, and that has stayed consistent, and I do appreciate, not only many boards before I got here.
That's right.
I'm just making comments based on the-
And my reply to you, please don't take it that away, it was not that. I just wanted to explain to you and the whole board, basically, where we're at, cause it's, it's hard to sum it up. It's easy to read on Facebook what you think may be going on.
That's right.
But here's what's really going on, okay? Here, here's what we spent on infrastructure, here's what we spent on schools, here's what we spent, you know, everywhere, here's the potential, you know? And when I say EDC, we talking about billions of dollars, okay? Since I've been on the board, we bring a company in for five hundred million, which, thank you very much, that was good. Now, we're talking into billions of dollars. So, when, when we see one of these investments come in, uh, we just had a meeting, me and Jason, and, um, I don't remember who I was at the meeting the other day with the company, and, uh, three billion dollars, you know?
We've discussed too, the, the, the percentage of tax dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've discussed it. I think it was like fifty-eight cents of every dollar, tax-wise, goes to the schools. So, that's a lot of money already going to the schools. Now, my, my contention is, when they get that, at that point, school board administrators, they've gotta be wise stewards of that money, because they're getting the lion's share of it right now out of everything we collect, so that's something else that needs to be known.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, like I say, if we gonna lay it out, we'll just lay it all out, and that's the way it's supposed to be. Like I say, I agree, brick and mortar don't educate our children. We quit, quit fooling ourselves that it does, you know? Um, so, uh, anyhow, that's where I stand. I, I think now, um, I don't know how much we've spent, um, and maybe i- if y'all got a minute, I don't know if y'all wanna do this or not. I have, uh, Brian and them back here to tell us where they're at on the original plan. Um, and again, I think some of the folks in the audience may wanna see that too, but we've already spent a lot of money going with what we thought was the original plan, the original vote, you know? So, again, I hear you, we can change for, for, uh, twenty or thirty thousand dollars and try to get a- So again, I hear you. We can change for for, uh, twenty or thirty thousand dollars and try to get a a parallel plan, but I think we've already spent millions on this plan. And when I ask how much or why or, they said they've had for the last sixty days, they've had thirty people. Worked twenty-five to thirty people working on the blueprints for this. Uh, so that's an expensive expensive mode. So where do y'all wanna go from here? Do y'all?
I do want to hear the update. I think that would be good for everyone in here to to hear. I I did wanna respond just because you had mentioned it and we kinda got off talking on other projects. Um, hundred percent agree with you. There's a lot of, uh, stuff on social media that is, uh, fictitious. Some of it at you, some of it at me, some of it at all sorts of us.
I'm the winner, though, okay?
You 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 get a lot. I I I will give you that. I I think I'm starting to make a little bit of a a run for your money here, but, um, that, yeah, so yes, I I agree. And that's why I think it's it's important, why I led with, like, have a have a civil discourse, which is what we've we've had up here today. Again, we have very different opinions. We have different priorities. Again, it doesn't mean the intentions are are off or wrong. Um, and I'll be honest, some of the, uh, comments that I've seen would make really great additions to the fiction section of a library and and honestly how they're written, probably the child section. Um, but what I what I would say too is, because it was brought up on, uh, and I've been very transparent on this. I released a statement, uh, earlier in the year after the the March vote, when we opposed, when I voted against, uh, the Sportsplex. And in that statement, a public statement, I said, and I'll say it here, I was initially for the Sportsplex. I I'll be transparent. I also, uh, liked the quote by, uh, it's, I think it's Ralph Waldo Emerson who said that a foolish consistency is the hobgoblin of little minds. It would not be sincere if I would have maintained that position when I knew that my true position was changing. So you can go out and actually read the statement. In that very statement too, I mention, people in favor, here's a direct quote, people in favor of the project do so with good intentions. While I may disagree with the prioritization and their conclusions, I do not question their sincerity or commitment to the county and the citizens. And that applies to my colleagues up here on the board. That's the last part I'll say.
I guess. One more thing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I've heard a lot of special mention of transparency from each of us, I think, at some point. I would like to have one commissioner sitting up here or one staff member to tell me where this board has ever not been transparent with the sports complex. Can you think of a time we've not been transparent with the citizens? Every meeting has been noticed. Every meeting has been open to the public. And any information that has been out there has been available to the public. So I don't know where this, all of a sudden, this issue of transparency comes from. I, you know, I just, I don't understand that because everything has been in the open.
Is is this a question for me, Commissioner Shell?
Sure.
Um, it, based on my statement, I was saying I was being transparent based on my personal opinion, not the board.
I understand, but, uh, in some of those comments in social media?
He's not seeing yours, just the comments.
No, I think we all are interested.
Does anybody up here think this is?
If anybody, have you ever seen anything this board has done that's not transparent? Even the things in closed meeting, if it's, it has decided to move forward, can't afford the board for a meet, for a vote. So that's not even, can be even be considered as not transparent.
Yeah, no, I hear you. And I don't I don't know maintenance is just my personal take. I don't know if transparency is the the right word. I think we've, as a board, we generally are very transparent. People can come to the meeting and speak, budgets and everything, the agendas are all online to to access. Um, what I what I would say is were there missed opportunities to better communicate the Sportsplex and the project? And and some of that, I will, I will take blame for some of that. I'm up here too. Right? So was that a missed opportunity to communicate it? And then two is were there? I was not on the board back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. But the Sportsplex came up then. I think there were only a couple of members on the board. I don't know if, and and maybe it it's not relevant now, but was there information and conversation then that could have been shared out publicly as well now to people who maybe were not aware? Like I just recently got the feasibility study that I didn't even know existed from the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen conversations. I was teaching school then. And reading through it, and again, I realize the Sportsplex is different now than it was then. The locations that were looked at back in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, those were up near the airport or they were near the community college. And even based on that feasibility study, I would I would not say it was a, uh, a home run of success. It seemed to kinda a very moderate position on recommending it. And so I think those conversations would have been would have been helpful too. And for me, for my own knowledge, because I wasn't, I didn't even know to ask for that.
Okay, I gotta I gotta rebuttal back to that. You serve on the Parks and Rec. They've seen it all, you know, and they've been through it. I'm sure, yeah. I mean, the Parks and Rec was very involved in 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 this whole thing from the original con- well, even before then, I think they said they started in two thousand and five or six or seven, so. Yeah, so, you know.
They may have. I'm just saying, I did not.
I'm just saying that it's it's kinda, you know, it's hard to cover, just like I just covered all the information I did well ago. It's hard to it's hard to cover everything.
To see, starting in two thousand and five, as Mr. Holmes said earlier, this had been started talking about. As soon as for our, uh, the people that's currently here now, here is the results from the twenty twenty-one survey that went out to every Davidson County citizen for electronic survey on our website. It was put into dispatch. It was put in our Oracle, down in Denton. It was run on Fox Eight News. It was run on Fox News Two. It was run on News Twelve. You can sit here and put out information all you want to. And as long as you put it out and it's not affecting somebody individually right then and there, they don't respond. They don't come to the meetings. We had four master plan meetings as both y'all are on the Parks and Rec Board now. Karen, you were a little bit a part of when some of these results come in. But to be honest with you, most of the commissioners that's sitting on here don't go back to when this was. Them commissioners have moved on. But this has been worked on and worked on and worked on from the time I got here. It has constantly come up at the Parks and Rec Board. There has been numerous meetings there about it. So this is not something that just flew by night. And I know I shouldn't come up here and say all this, but I won't, I just wanna make the everybody aware of what has happened. It has transpired. It's been to the news media several times. Several news con- I got several people on my phone from Fox Eight News that I have called year after year after year, and we've done some of several of these. We've done at least, at least four community meetings in the different regions around the county to get the citizens' feedbacks for what they wanted before we did this. This plan that we have presented to the Parks and Rec Board and the reason the Parks and Rec Board stood behind it unanimously was because we, they also serve everybody on the region. They're in every region of the county. And we had these meetings in every region of the county. And then we sit there and when we brought all that back, we took the results of what everybody in Davidson County said and basically built them all in this one park. So we're not building five or six different parks. We're building one park. And we served everything except for a shooting range, a horse stable, and horse trails. Everything else that every citizen in Davidson County gave us on their thing, even when it only got one or two votes, we included in this park. So that way we could serve as many citizens as possible. And that they seen that the time that we put in to doing all these surveys and all this studying didn't go to waste. So there was numerous and hundreds of people that showed up. Thousands of re- results that we got back in our feedback. It wasn't one or two people. It wa- this happened in twenty twenty-one. You can go back and Google on our Facebook page. It was on there. It was on Fox Eight News, on all the rest of them. You can go back and see where we put that in there. But I just, because y'all are new members and you don't have that history. And maybe that's some of what I, we need to work on going forward. As people come on, that's the reason also when y'all come on, I invited y'all to come to my office and ask me any information you might need going forward. So you could get up to speed to where we have been. Because there is a lot of moving parts in Parks and Recreation and we've got a lot of different things go on. So as y'all know, we also helped during COVID with the jail. We come over and clean the jail and we hit, take care of the airport as well, Mo. So it's not just Parks and Recreation. We have numerous things that we talk on on that board. And I just want that to be transparent as well, that we are doing our due diligence and listening to our citizens.
Well, and that's the right ter- and that's a good point. I wanna bring that up, you know? And I get it, the citizens are not informed as well as they should be. But it's because they don't go to the Parks and Rec meeting. Those meetings are open, right?
Yes, sir.
Open to the public. So, you know, and I get it, no, everybody's got a busy life, you know? So they don't come to commissioners' meetings, you know? We had one gentleman that come here, his name was Barney Hill, and, uh, he come every meeting for several.
And Barney asked me tons and tons and tons of questions.
But he was here at every meeting. It didn't matter what the subject. He was here learning what his government was doing or protesting what his government may be doing, whichever one it was. But Barney Hill was here. He's the only one in my whole fifteen years that I can look at in the audience and go, they're here. So part of that is our, and and we do the same thing on a state level and on a Washington level. We sit back at our house and we complain about what's going on, but we're not involved, you know? So again, I think the public could have been more informed. Again, I'm like Steve, everything is handled here as transparent as I know we can do it. It's all on an agenda. It's all, uh, posted in public. They can come to this meeting anytime and listen to anything we do. You know, I get it, it's eight o'clock on a Thursday morning, but I'm away from my job as well today, just like y'all are, you know? Um, and, you know, it's it's Monday afternoons at six. A lot of people's got stuff going on. They gotta go home with the kids. But again, we gotta take care of business at some time, at some point.
Well, we that we even do more than most counties do. We notice our committee meetings. They're open to the public.
Yeah.
And most counties don't do that.
But so we try to do, be just as transparent as we can be about everything. I mean, I I'm one of those guys. I want transparency. I know there's rumors out there on Facebook that I don't, but that's not true at all. I'm a small government, small, low-tax kinda guy. It's what I run for. That was my principle.
Yep.
Okay? So I can tell you this. I can tell you on the study, what I know about the study, we paid somebody to come in and do a study. Uh, I could have told you what their study was gonna say before we paid them to do it. They sitting on the fence.
Yeah.
Sitting on the fence. Well, you know, it's easy to sit on the fence. If I'd have sat on the fence a long time ago, I didn't ever owned any business, you know? Because you gotta, you gotta take a chance. Um, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? So but again, what happened with that one, and I read on the internet that, you know, the people voted on, they voted it down. They didn't do that. What really happened back then, you started having three or four different people fight for the money. They didn't want the money on the sports complex because they wanted it in the school system. They wanted it here. They wanted it there. I mean, the ones that was on the board, was you on the board then, Karen? But but they really started competing for that money. And that's that's what you see in government, okay? Everybody sees a piece of pie. They all want that piece of pie. So, uh, that's kinda how that turned out. But all you gotta do is look around in other communities. They have these and they're successful, you know? And and it's come to, in in my opinion, it's come to what people expect. You know, I get it. I just turned sixty, okay? I won't be playing soccer and I won't be playing softball or baseball.
I don't know.
Maybe pickleball, you know, maybe pickleball. But that's not what the younger folks want, you know? So what I want, again, this is not a Todd Yates want. This is not a Todd Yates legacy like everybody likes to claim it is, okay? This is what I think the kids and the younger generations want. Uh, and when we meet with these folks, and Mr. Jason can tell you right over there, they wanna know, some of these bigger companies wanna know what we have for quality of life for their employees. They wanna know that before they come here, before they invest. So and again, I'm glad we we do our EDC different now because we get to talk to them face to face. We get to see what their wants are. We get to see what they ask for. Me and Casey rode around with the guys that bought, that's fixing to build a four hundred and fifty million dollar plan over here in the industrial park. We had to push them out. They got their golf cart stuck and, uh, we had to push them out, uh, of the mud hole. But we we talk to these people. We see what they want. They never once asked us for an incentive, okay? We've been given incentives for years. They never asked us for one. So that wasn't a big player of why they wanna come here. That was not the big part. So anyhow, just a little bit of feedback of what the life is as a commissioner.
Always, always good to get additional context. If you don't mind, I'd like to respond briefly to to Thomas, uh, while you're making your way up here. Thomas, you know how much I appreciate the, you you, one, your passion and obviously I would stand by that you and the Parks and Rec Department do very much, a lot of due diligence. And you put in a lot of time and a lot of hours. A lot of it is unseen. So I agree with you there. My point was more on just, again, communication and how we as commissioners, as the elected officials of the people would, again, permit and and get out documents and and increase awareness for the project. So don't don't take it as a slide at at the department.
I I didn't. What what I'm saying is, it doesn't seem to matter. Since I've been here, we are required in Parks and Recreation Departments to do a survey of our citizens about once every ten years. We've done four since I've been here in nine years.
Mm-hmm.
We're fixing to do another one this year, this coming year. So that way we can stay up to date and continually keep moving. Because as you said a while ago, in twenty fifteen, it wasn't as favorable. But you also look back in twenty fifteen, Rocky Mount decided to step out on the edge and say, hey, we're gonna build this thing when their town was going bankrupt. And now they're flourishing down there like no, I I can't even say how good they're doing. But they're constantly continuing to keep building to their facility and they've added to a lot more town amenities because of their facility. And it all come back and every one of them councilmen down there will tell you, it all come back due to the sports complex that they built. Point blank. That's documented over and over again. You can look at it anywhere you want to.
No, I I take your word for it. And I I would say, again, wherever this shakes out eventually, like if if we break down and it's, it is the, if we get the alternative great, if that's not the consensus and it's, uh, gets finalized eventually, then I I would hope everyone would wanna see it successful for the county. And that would include me who who, again, voted to oppose it. Because at that point, it's lid is shut, right? It's still open right now, which is one reason we're having these conversations. Um, but I did wanna speak, at least, again, favorable to the work you've done, the quality of the work, the thanking, the time that goes into it.
Well, and the thing is, Parks and Recreation, as you, both y'all know, you sit on the board, we are the environmentalists.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at every aspect we can to make this property better than it was when we got it. And if we build this project, all that is at the forefront of thinking of every bit of it. Most of the part of the property that we're looking to even doing is already cleared. It's already been timbered. It's eroding out. So we're trying to use that in our design phase is what they, the team put together. So we're not taking down the trees that's there.
I I stopped by there. I was, uh, heading down, a big history. I was heading down to Valor Memorial Park in in Denton a couple of weeks ago and I had stopped. It was, it was gated at the time, so I just, I went on foot and then I felt like I was trespassing and breaking the law, so then I I left. Um, but I, you you get a sense that there there's, there's, there's buffer there. Um, my my concerns stand, right? I'm gonna stand by them, my concerns and and what I've said over the past several months. Um, but yeah, definitely hear what what you've shared.
And and to Thomas's credit, Mr. Chairman, man, or either, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, you're good.
Okay, uh, you know, I made a statement earlier that Thomas is probably the best director in the state of North Carolina. You remember a conversation we had a while back? My my discussion with a CEO that was looking to bring a business to this county? And he said, Steve, he said, I love Davidson County. It's a beautiful county, beautiful people. But I don't wanna move my family there because there's nothing to do. And so they they do look at the amenities that we offer in this county. And we brought the the, with the help of Thomas and his crew. When I came on, participation in our parks was about seventy-three thousand, I believe, at that time. And now that it's over a million three, I think, participation in all the parks in this county.
One point six.
One point six million. So our citizens, they're it, we are trying to provide things for our citizens to do. And it would leaving out one component of the sports complex. We talk about the children. So we talk about the children, great, the teams and all this. What about just the folks who live in Davidson County that decide that on Saturday, they wanna go down and watch a major tournament? As spectators, give them something to do. Take their family, take their children. There are all kinds of opportunities there. And I really believe, or I would not, if you know me, you know I, I wouldn't. I would not support this if I didn't think that in time, if properly built, that the citizens of this county would be proud of this park. People will shake their head, but they don't, they're not looking far down the road, they're thinking about their backyard right now. And I understand that, I'd probably be doing the same thing. But there is a, a, a future. And what does the future hold?
Okay, we're, we're having a meeting here. Um, we- No, we're having a discussion. Y'all have already had your public address, so, um, this is up to the board. No, no chat from outside in the audience. Um-
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry?
Do we wanna have the update?
Yeah, we'll get an update in just a second. Um, what, on, on this tournament play now, I hear people saying that they can't, um, they can't use the fields because of tournament play. What, is this tournament gonna be on Saturdays? Is it gonna be on Sundays? Uh, wh- when will the, the, does county citizens get to use the fields?
Anytime, the county citizens will get used fields anytime they pretty much want to use the fields. It's just like Hughes Park. Hughes Park is used for tournaments every weekend. But you go out there and do-
That's Saturday and Sunday most of the time?
Usually, usually, most of the time, they end up doing a one-day tournament. So they might be used on Saturday. Most of the time, that's predominantly when they're used. And, yes, they're gonna be booked, probably for a Saturday to be booked. But you don't know that all the fields are gonna be booked. And you don't know that all the, you're probably not gonna have baseball and softball going, I mean, baseball and soccer going at the same time. So there's gonna be fields open. And you can come out to Hughes Park all the time and see people do use the open fields when they're open for peo-, just the families to come out there and use. And this is just a regular park. I, I know, I'm the one that called it a sports complex to start with, but this is a regional park. It's got walking trails, it's got disc golf, it's got a little everything for everybody. And like I said, as we move forward, we want to turn the up, the small field at the front into a dog park. So we have a dog park at that end, as we have at Yakon River Park. They have been well-received and that field's used quite regularly for dogs now. So we want to put the features in there for the dogs. So that way, we're kinda working the two parks together. And, uh, so that's, to answer your question-
Mostly on Saturdays is when it'll be used for tournament-
Yeah, mo- mostly, yep. But like I said, it's never probably, everything's never gonna be booked at all the time.
Right.
And just like at West Campus we have now, when we don't have anything else going on, we have it open to the public. It's free to walk in, it's free to use the open gym, it's free to do whatever we have when we have-
Pickleball.
Stuff going, yep, pickleball is used a lot.
Okay.
So-
Do you have something?
Yes, I wanted to ask you, and ju- just so the, the ones talk about being in the community. Hughes Park started out as a community park. And then the land got larger and larger and, and we added more. How many parks and what goes on there? And is it in a community where one oh nine has houses and-
Hughes Park is, that, that's the issue. It isn't, it was in a community to start with. It has grow, we have growed all the way to all the houses and we can't grow no more.
That's right.
That's originally where this, in two thousand and five, that's what started, was Hughes Park. And it got to where that's not a big enough place for this to be there.
To be.
And, I mean, them fields are used all the time.
It's in a community, it's on the road I live on, and it's on, uh, what's the other road? Um- Holly Grove.
East Holly Grove, yep.
Holly Grove. And houses one right after the other. So it's, it's in our community, uh, and, you know?
And the, the difference between that one and this one is, this one's all gonna be shielded by trees all the way around.
That one's still not open.
That one is wide open. So when the field lights are running out there, everybody along that neighborhood that are actually now in Thomasville City limits are right up against a hat.
And you've got a whole lot of fields. How many do you have?
Total of seven.
Seven fields there.
Yep.
And, and, and then you have, um-
Optimus is over on the other side, that we have two more fields over there.
You know, it's, you know, it's in a community too.
Mm-hmm.
I, I guess the biggest thing that I hear is, is the fireworks show for my house. Well, that's, that doesn't bother me to have the boom, boom, boom. But that's-
Have, have we had any complaints from the neighbors, uh, there that you know of?
Nobody said anything to me.
Nope.
So-
The people parked up in their, in their yards or with the neighbors, they just get their chairs, lawn chairs out and sit and watch.
Wonderful.
Um, volleyball, somebody caught me on the street the other day, and like I say, Matt and Trip, I've heard the same thing. I have some for it and some against it, and, you know, when I'm out in public. Uh, so, but somebody told me the other day about volleyball fields, um, or volleyball courts, I guess. And what a dire need we were for needing volleyball courts. And, and don't let them cut the volleyball courts out, because supposedly, we got ten or twelve teams that don't have enough courts to play on now.
Yep, they use our West Campus now. We have one gym. So that's one court. Uh, and they use it. And, uh-
So I, I don't know much about volleyball. I just know, I think you, I thought you played it at the beach, so, um, so this is something-
In, in the gym.
In the gym.
One, one basketball court is one volleyball court. So, eh, all four of the basketball courts are also gonna be positioned to be volleyball courts as well.
So who plays? What's the age group of this volleyball stuff? And I, I didn't get into that with this constituent, but-
That, it, it can range all the way from seven, eight years old up to sixteen-year-olds.
All right, yeah, so we'll, we'll move on to the update now and, um, see where we're at and, thank you. Good morning, gentlemen.
I'm here, and so is Jeff, uh, Shearer with our-
Our kid Jeff always stands over there, maybe he's-
Might, he might be the Moses, I'm just the Aaron. But, uh, anyway, I just wanted to provide an update, uh, in a general update. Uh, so we'll just kinda move through the list. I welcome any questions you may have, and if there are questions about, uh, plans or alternates or anything like that. So from a thirty thousand square foot view, um, we have currently, uh, received about fifty percent of our environmental things have been confirmed from the state. Uh, we just recently received, we've received our historical certification. We've received our Fish and Wildlife Management Certification that's been approved. So that's endangered species, things like that. And we have submitted to the Clean Water Act. So I'm expecting that to come back in about sixty days. But in truth, with the park design, we completely avoided wetlands and creeks. Got as far away as we could from any of that, just so we don't have, I don't expect any issues from the Clean Water Act. Uh, so, in other words, environmental seems like it's a good green flag and we're moving there. Geotechnical has done all the borings, we're waiting back for that initial information. Soil borings, testings, that's more of the engineering side. Uh, we have received our preliminary feedback from NC DOT after a long back and forth on scope and intersections and, and some of the, uh, magic eight ball. It feels like sometimes working with D, NC DOT, but we, we're, we're getting there. And, uh, so we have received some initial feedback on turning lanes, a possible signal intersection, some things like that. So, uh, they, they, they actually went above and beyond and asked us to analyze it for the weekend and extra intersections, because it is a big part. So, we, the scope was a lot bigger than we initially expected, but that's okay, we've adapted. And, and, and so now, I've received the initial preliminary from the engineer, the traffic engineer. I'm gonna sit down with them and then we'll move into the, then all that gets submitted to DOT for their blessing ultimately. And then we would, based on their blessing and the agreement, then we would start the design procedure for those off-site improvements. From the grading plan, as you had mentioned, the grading is done, pretty much. The grading plan, eh, has been submitted to Deaner out of the Winston office. Uh, they have by right forty-five days to review. We're probably a week or two away from that deadline wrapping up. And we're scheduled very shortly in the next week to take the main building and go to the North Carolina Department of Insurance. Because this building is large, by, by code, any large building, be it a Walmart, a sportsplex or anything, has to go through Raleigh. And so, uh, this building is ready, about ready to be submitted to Raleigh. We're probably eighty, eighty percent done with the full set of drawings. I mean, right now, it's probably two hundred and fifty pages of blueprints range. Between the grading and the building, we've got done. By the time it's done, I expect it'll be four hundred pages of blueprints kinda range. So, it's just a lot of details when you're dealing with pools, electrical and mechanical and all these various things, stormwater, sewer, all these elements. So, uh, that's kinda the macro update of where we are. So I would say, if I had to put a number on it, I would say we're eighty, eighty-five percent done with, we're down to colors, which is what we're gonna talk about in facilities meeting and things like that at this point. So, uh, that's where we are from our design side. Um, so if I have any questions on that, before I jump in the, kinda the-
Any questions?
Nope.
All right. So this is just a, just seventeen slides, just kind of a, again, overview. Be glad to answer any questions anyone has. Um, so this is now the site, as has been submitted for grading to the, uh, Deaner. And, uh, the only adjustment, really, a couple little items. Does this have a laser pointer?
It does.
I should've brought my reading glasses. I'm afraid I'm gonna have to throw them, but, oh yeah, I found it. All right. The only additions in that time period are, uh, there's a maintenance facility that'll be completely screened off. We kinda, it's been nomadic, we've been trying to figure out where to put it. But it's right there. And then right here at the end, this little swoop going into Owen, that's a result of DOT making sure our turning lanes and capacity are long enough. But besides that, a lot of this has not changed. So we're still showing the eighteen total fields and the, uh, and we got the corridor still. Basically, you're coming into this nice roundabout and then you're going around the campus and going right back out. And all the fields on the perimeter and all the water park and sportsplex in the central core. Uh, so that's, this is just a macro version of the building itself. This is, uh, the sportsplex. So to the right are the gyms, the four gyms, which, again, will be cross-use for different sports, not just basketball. Uh, to the top left is the community center aspect, uh, meeting rooms, classrooms, places where people can gather. Bottom left is the, to the right is the pool for the, um, competition pool. And to the left is what, what we call a fun pool, uh, slide, seasonal pool that can be used all year long. Um, so that's there. There's a picture of the front, a rendering. Uh, this is the water park plan view. Uh, so the top of it is towards that building we just saw. That's kinda the, um, gradual river, I mean, gradual pool where it slopes in gradually. Lots of kids play, a lot of little splash features. Then it steps up and to the back is the lazy river. It's actually eleven feet or so above the other, so it's kinda this neat tiered thing. And there's some slides to the right and some other features. And a lot of these are buildings. The to the top, for example, is the main kitchen. And so the idea being that they do all food prep there and they will distribute it to the different concession stands within the king, within the grounds. So that saves money than having to build five kitchens, like to build one kitchen and then they distribute. Uh, there's a couple renderings. Uh, so there's the high side, the lazy river side. Uh, this is an indoor rendering of the gym. That's, uh, right now, that's Eggers purple. Well, that's, we'll see how their sponsorship holds up, but, uh, that's, uh, or maybe Thomas purple, I'm not sure. We, we're, we're getting the colors later, but, uh, this is the idea of the scope and scale of the four gyms. So there's a walking, we're using a different surface around the perimeter for a walking track. It's more durable, so it's, and then the maple flooring type flooring you're used to with gyms will be in the middle. That way, that flooring will last longer and they won't wear so much from the walking activities. Um, another view here. Uh, this is the indoor competition pool view. Um, the baffles and the, and, and these, these pools are different temperatures. Your, your competition pool is cooler than your fun pool. Eh, and that's part of the rules of competition pools, as I have been educated by Jeff and the pool designing team. Uh, so we have to heat them and treat them a little differently. There's the fun side of the indoor pool and auditorium. Uh, this is the lobby, as you would go in. So if you're walking in the building, to the back would be the pool and to the left would be the gyms. And that's kinda the look. We're kinda trying to, the wood, that, again, that's that Eggers product, but it's to the left and that wood kinda draws you toward the gym and then the, kinda the blues and stuff draw you toward the water. And it's just kinda the thinking.
So now, I guess I've heard maybe Egger may would donate some of this material to-
There is, and, I mean, I don't wanna overstep too much, but-
Yeah, we, uh-
They met with Egger.
Yeah, we, uh, we toured their facility, uh, and looked at some of their products that could be implemented into the design. And so, um, if, if anyone ever goes and sees their showroom, it's, it's quite, it's quite the event.
Yes.
Uh, but they were able to lay out some, some samples that they have. And we were able to incorporate some of those, you know, into the design. And so the thought is, whether it's gift and kind or it's sponsorship, there may be some, uh, ability for them to have, to have a sense.
Trade off, yeah. We've actually talked to several local producers, manufacturers to try to bring some coordination in for local, local business. Uh, and then, whoops, I just hit a button. Sorry. Uh, playgrounds, very, very nice ADA playground, uh, systemed out there near the gyms for families. And, uh, a couple of small playgrounds scattered throughout the park, but then the big ones there, uh, for the, uh, kids. Um, and again, you have a copy of all this. I'm not gonna pretend we can all read these line items, but the bottom line is, we are still well, we're still within budget. Um, we still have a decent contingency. Um, just as a note, for example, uh, just, uh, I heard, and obviously I've been listening to all this conversation, but the, a recent turf field project as a standalone project was one point two million. By us doing four at the same time, we're getting them for eight hundred thousand apiece. So there is still some buying power, as you had mentioned, whether it's scope or scale, that's for you to work out. But, uh, there is, we are trying to leverage our buying power with the lighting, with the fields, saying, "Look, we're giving you a, you know, this is eighteen fields we're putting lights on, you're gonna have to sharpen your pencil better." And so we are trying to be wise stewards of, of the budget. But we are still currently in budget, as, as we are, uh, working. Things are coming in and being refined. And, uh, this is just another budget sheet that you can look at, you're, where we're breaking down the cost of each sections of these buildings. And, uh, and the, the neat thing, this was just one shot, but the software now is so specific that we can, they can pick a room and we can hit a button and it'll tell us every single component in that room and put a cost to it. And so we can, it'll tell you the screws, the outlets, the, the wall studs, the everything. It's, it's, it's pretty neat, though. But I was just showing you that from terms of a-
Yeah, the, the, the whole Revit system allows us to sort in any fashion we want. We create, for example, the wall, that's the wall in blue that's created, and then you get all of the information. So we're able to get really good quality, uh, takeoffs and apply unit pricing, uh, for the overall, uh, uh, different materials. So we're really trying to be careful, you know, as we're designing this, you know, we, we know there's a budget. We're really trying to be careful with that, uh, thought. And the slide before, we even went back to paddock pools, uh, we double-checked all the water features, all the slides, uh, which are through Spectac- Splashtacular at the moment. And all those fell right in line with what the original budget, uh, you know, was showing. So we feel very confident that the design is still in line.
May I say something?
Yes.
Yes, I repeatedly tell Thomas, "Don't go over."
Yes. Yeah, it, that is, I, I do, af- after all this, I, trust me, the last thing I wanna do is come up here and have to ask for any more, uh, funds. But we have a pretty good contingency-
Yeah.
On top of all this.
But you're gonna need it.
Plus, we're developing, we're just really trying to keep a, a, a very conservative budget, uh, just for that very reason. So, but I'd be glad to answer any more questions.
I got one that, Jeff mentioned that Spectacular is our slide manufacturer-
Splashtacular.
Splashtacular is our slide manufacturer.
It was our slide manufacturer right now that we've looked at. But when they gave the numbers back to Paddock, they've already went up seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the time we started this project tonight. So we are now looking at alternative professional slide companies as well to try to get them to sharpen their number up and the others to come in with sharper numbers.
We're able to challenge back to say that's.
Just because we're trying to get things as, as good as we can, just the highest quality, but as low as we can get for the taxpayer.
It's a dance.
Dance. I, I appreciate you showing the, the pictures. I can, you can certainly understand folks who, um, who are supportive of the project, why they get excited when they, they look at things like this. Um, and you, you all have always done good work when we've worked with y'all and I know you work with other local governments. I won't rehash obviously my, my own concerns, but, yeah, so I appreciate the, the walkthrough and the update and the transparency here.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
All right.
Any more questions?
I don't think so. Any questions? All right. So I guess I got another question that's probably gonna lead to this. I'm, I'm trying to guess here, what kinda money do we have in what's been done so far in design work?
We are about, um.
Nah, you, I'm talking about to, to today.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if he can tell you or you can tell me. I don't know unless you've turned the bill in it to him thirty minutes ago.
I did it before this.
In design, uh, has been spent two million, fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
Which represents about a little tiny bit over fifty percent.
Correct.
So do we still owe you more on top of that?
If you were to draw a line magically today. Yes, we are further along in constr- cause the, the bigger monies that are left are the construction documents, which is what we're actively grinding very hard through to get ready for the Department of Insurance. At that point, as soon as we cross that line of construction documents, in truth, the billing from this side would be a lot slower because then we're into bidding, construction management, permitting, things that drag out a little longer. So we're probably gonna be pretty soon at the seventy, seventy-five percent billing rate, probably in the next thirty days or so. And then that last twenty-five percent will be over the year or two of the, of the project. Because it's mostly overseeing it at that point and, and things like that. But as soon as Deaner comes back, I mean, we're probably beginning the bid process in the next thirty days at least and maybe even sooner on grading, for example, the mass grading.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
One more question. So your best guesstimate of completion of the project. Uh, and I know weather plays a, every, you know, all these kinda things play a big part.
We've been, actually been, part of this has been, we tried to be, since we really got this green light at August, almost, we've been very aggressively trying to push because we still wanna make our Memorial Day opening in twenty-seven. That's. Now, that would be everything but the grass fields. The grass fields, um, they take a year to, before you can really play on them without destroying them. But, uh, Memorial Day weekend, that way you get the full season of the pool and such as that. And we're still on track for that time.
Let's hope you come underneath budget enough, we can do all, um, artificial turf fields and we ain't gotta grow any grass.
Maybe we use the sponsorship money.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So where do we go from here?
Doesn't sound like, uh, there's a consensus, but I had to try.
Yeah.
Stated, I, I appreciated y'all taking a look at it, um, and the conversation, the dialogue. At the end of the day, we're, we're, like I said at the beginning, we're a republic and we, we're all elected, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I'm ex- I'm excited, uh, and I know y'all are. And, you know, even, you know, if it's not scaled down, I'm, I'm just excited about the opportunity for our citizens and, you know, down the road, you know, this is, this is going to be a great thing, I think.
Well, I think we laid a lot out on the table today to give everybody a lot more perspective about the whole situation and the whole inner workings of everything that happens here, so.
I appreciate the dialogue and that we could talk about it and share each other's thoughts and in a civil manner and a professional manner. I appreciate that. That's what we're supposed to be about.
I do too. Thank you. All right.
Question, Jerry?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I think I'm.